With that, the September 13th regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. I am the Chair, Christine Vitale, and I'm joined tonight by Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, interim superintendent Dr. Tracy, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. I ask you to all please rise for the pledge. Mr. Asa, will you lead us in the pledge? Just for the board's information, I found out just a few minutes ago that we're having problems with Fairfield TV, so this meeting will not be broadcast live through Fairfield TV. It will be accessible live through calling the WebEx number, and Fairfield TV will be recording, and it will be posted tomorrow. Apologize for that. It was a last-minute technical difficulty. And with that, we'll move right on to public comment. I invite any members of the public who would like to give comment on agenda items to come forward. You have three minutes for a comment. We will also be taking public comment at the end of the meeting. Testing one, two, three. I'm not getting the... Do I sound loud? Fun times, fun times with our tech. All right, I'm seeing no, no members of the public would like to give comment at this time. We'll move right on to presentations. We're joined tonight by our athletic directors, who will be giving a presentation of the athletic financials and waterfall. If any callers calling in to please ask you to mute your phones? If that's what that sound was.
Are we ready to begin? Okay, sorry. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Everybody looks wonderful in their T-shirts. We'll just jump right into it. A lot of the beginning pages are the same as last year. I'll just note a couple of the changes. This year, if you look on page three, it says that Fairfield Public Schools offers students at both high schools the opportunity to participate in 40 sports. That is up from last year, as rugby is now... Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Todd Parnessa. I'm the athletic director at Fairfield Lolo High School.
Gina Di Giacomo, Athletic Director, Fairfield Ward.
So, I'm sorry, I'm on the third page, and you'll see at the top, we are at 40 sports now. Rugby is now back into the public schools. It was previously part of the school system, and then went out on its own as a club, and now we have brought it back in. So, right now, it's a club sport. It's not yet at the varsity level. It's not a CIAC sport, but it is a club sport within the building. Another change on page four, we have the school-based equipment capital outlay, which was requested when we started this a couple of years ago, and now it is an additional account added to the budget for athletics. The next slide, just go over each, just give a description of what the athletic account, the school-based account is comprised of. And on the slide after that, you'll see what was allocated to both schools, the overall spending from both schools. You'll note that the, there was an additional amount given at the end of the year to support funding for uniforms. And you'll also know for both schools, there's a non-negotiables, which is the fees, game workers, metal supplies, reconditioning, transportation, things of that nature, which is approximately 65% at Lolo and 66 at Ward. As we move on, you have the school-based athletic rental account. It lists all the facilities that we rent throughout the year. Many of those are for co-ops, and others are for sports that both schools have separately as well. The next slide shows the budget that was allocated for that, and the money that was spent for each one. There was some funds transferred from Ward rental to the Lolo account for co-op purchases that were mainly for girls' ice hockey, ice time, and that is a co-op that both schools are part of the team. The athletic equipment waterfall, this is the new waterfall. Both schools were allocated $15,000 last year. That was for funding things, larger purchases that are on the waterfall. You have also in your packet, you can see what was specifically purchased, and the timeline on when those are to be purchased in the future as well. The next slide is the district-based accounts. That is the stuff that comes, not necessarily that we're spending money on, but from Central Office for trainers, coaching stipends, custodial overtime, and insurance. And you can see that they were both pretty similar expenditures at both schools. We had, went back to ticket revenue this year, and if you go to slide 14, you'll see that amazingly, we were within, you know, less than $200 that we generated at both schools. That's a lot of different games, so to be that close was, was pretty amazing to look at. And then, added that fund, we cover the police costs for those events. And then you can see the breakdown for the ticket sales throughout the season, the different seasons last year. And then the next slide has the history. You could see that in 2021, we didn't sell tickets due to COVID, but 2122, we went back to it and made, you know, basically the same amount we had in 1920. And then the next, you know, set of slides are specifics, gets into greater detail of the expenses for each line item, for each school, from each account, for the various items and categories purchased throughout the year. It also breaks it down by, shows the participation numbers from each school for each sport, and the per pupil expenditure for each sport at each school. That's the next few slides. If we jump to, that's great detail. I don't know if we can, probably don't have time to go through each one of those, but you can go through those. And then, if you move to slide 31, it shows our accomplishments for the year. We categorized how many athletes each school had, how many participated in College Signing Day, how many division champs, FCAC state champs, and then all FCAC and all-state recipients we had for the schools. Next, these are some of the budget accomplishments, things that we feel that, you know, we've accomplished through this process over the past couple of years. The budget has been increased in order to get those uniforms for last year, which was great. The athletic waterfall, the equipment waterfall that I spoke about, has been established. We're now using Arbiter Pay for game workers, which gets that payout to officials much quicker, and it streamlines the process, not only for us, but also for Central Office. And this year, we also added 12-month secretarial, secretarial support. And then, lastly, next steps, and really just some points of emphasis, we, we would like to streamline the accounts a little bit further for those co-ops, or let me back up. We like one Ward account that includes rental, one Lolo account that includes rental, and then a joint co-op account for rental. So there's not transferring funds back and forth for co-op sports, and it makes it a little bit more transparent and easier to see in the end. The money, the money would still be the same, there's no need for extra money. It's just adding that account to, to pay for things in a more transparent way, so you can see what's coming out from each school's budget for co-ops rather than their individual sports. And then just continue the collaboration with Central Office to ensure facility upgrades and to maintain the extension, maintain the extension of spending deadlines. This year, we were able to spend out past basically the end of the sports season in the spring, which was very helpful, because we knew what basically our costs were at that point, and how much were left, or was going to be needed left over. So, at this time, I guess, open up to questions, or anything that anybody may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm just going to ask, before we get to questions, I'm going to ask for the board's unanimous consensus to take a five-minute recess. We're still having some problems with the mics, so I'm going to ask if we could just recess, so we can shut down the system and restart it, and hopefully that will correct it. That'll give the board some time to look over these documents. So we, seeing no objection, we're in recess for the next five minutes, or until we can get rebooted. Thank you. And, Ms. Giacomo, I apologize for not giving you the, for welcoming you as the new athletic director for Fairfield Ward. We spoke in finance committee, so I am, I'm thinking that you've been here for a while, and you have been with the district for a while in a different position, so welcome. And I'll take it to the board for any questions. Ms. Kelly.
Hi. I know we talked about this in the finance meeting, but if you could, I didn't fully understand the rationale of what happened with the, with the arbiter surplus. Can you talk, walk us through that again, like how that came to be?
Sure. So, you're referring to page six. There's an arbiter surplus of 13,157, and what that was, was we deposit money into a third-party account in order to pay officials' fees throughout the year. It's called Arbiter. That's also the same program that we do our scheduling on. So, most schools are using it for paying officials as well, because it streamlines the process. It prevents us from having to give out vouchers, then sending those vouchers to Central Office and sending out checks. So it just streamlines the whole process. So, we deposit money into that account, so it's funded, so after each game, we're able to process that payment to the officials. And in 2021, due to COVID, there was an excess amount in there due to cancellations from games throughout the year for various reasons.
Okay, and I guess, I don't know if this is a board question or not, I'm just confused why any of the excess would have still been there. Wasn't that the whole non-lapsing account, like wouldn't it have gone in there instead of, I don't understand how it was still there then to be rolled over into this year? Is, and I don't know if that's a Courtney question, I'm not, I'm not sure, but does that make sense? Does anybody understand what I'm asking?
Ms. Laborius, do you want to take that?
So, it's correct that the arbiter account is a separate bank account, and it predated me for that year. We do require a bank reconciliation for that account, so the practice would be to return the funds to the board that were underfunded, so I'll have to look into that for the next meeting, and just wonder if Todd had an agreement with my predecessor to account for those funds in some other way.
Yes. So the previous director of finance was aware of it and allowed the money to stay up.
So we'll be happy to report out to you on those funds, you know, going back a few years, in a Friday packet, if that's okay?
That's fine. I, I don't need you to do any more work on it. I just wanted to understand it, to know if this is something we should anticipate annually, like is this something we'll always have, or like we kind of feel like this was a one-time, one-and-done, or... I, I, my only concern is just that we had given the additional spend-out money of $19,000, but $13,000 we already had sitting in surplus, so I just wonder if we would have spent the money differently, knowing that there was already surplus in the athletic account. That's the only thing, so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the process, so next year, we are...
Correct, yes. And it's a, just to be clear, it's an account that we write a check to, a separate bank account, and I was not, since my, I started doing the bank reconciliation, but I, I will going forward, so that I'm aware of what the funds are surplus in that account, and happy to report that back to the board regularly.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, so with regard to the rugby, are we planning, obviously our budget is set for this current school year, but moving forward, will you be looking to put a little money into that program for stipends and whatnot, like we do for the other programs?
That's certainly something that we're going to have to talk about. Yeah, right now, they're within the school at the point that we, we're not supporting them financially in that sense yet, but they needed to be part of the school in order to participate in some of the league play, and for insurance purposes, I believe, as well. So that is, moving forward, we may look to do that as well. We're in discussions with them about what their needs might be moving forward.
Okay, yeah. I would just ask that, that we continue those conversations. I know when this was brought to Mr. Cummings and to board leadership, you know, there was support for this, and then it was talked about at the board level, but I think that if this program is going to continue to return and be robust, that we need to make sure that we are, you know, funding it so it can be sustainable.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. And we did have some parents reach out in the spring, just sharing some concerns about just transportation for rugby. We did, you know, explain that the district did take on supporting it as a co-op team again, that there was an interest, and we were happy to, you know, provide this opportunity for our students, but would just ask for you to look at it during, in preparation for the next budget cycle, to support these kids. Any other questions about the waterfall? Ms. Maxon Cannelly?
Thank you. So I hadn't realized that rugby was part of the already existing year, so I don't see where it is on the support pages.
We didn't support them internally as an individual sport last year with budget funds as far as like uniforms and equipment and things like that. That hasn't started to happen yet.
Okay, so it was a team which got them access to, school-sponsored, got them access to insurance, but other than that, they were on their own for supporting their own program?
It also got them access to fields in town as well.
Okay, thank you. My other questions, a few things. I was wondering what we do in terms of ever revisiting the rental rates that we're paying. I think especially at Fairfield University with the pool, I think I share a common sentiment that I wish something better, I'm not putting, faulting anyone for this, but the idea that we're paying as much as we are when they pay no taxes to the town, but just that, that whole idea of revisiting any of those rental rates, is that something that we have ever, that we have done recently?
So, we, during COVID, we were not allowed to go to Fairfield University, unfortunately, so we did have to find other facilities to go to, and the prices were higher, just, you know, just using that as an example. With Sacred Heart finishing their ice rink, that is something that we're going to be able to look into as an alternate option to possibly going there instead of Wonderland. Other than that, there's not many other facilities that we could look at for many other sports, but we could certainly go back to some of them and, you know, try to negotiate different rental costs.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but Sacred Heart, like Fairfield, is also not offering their facility pro bono?
They are not, no.
Yeah, shame. On that realm, the whole idea of any kind of, you know, whether it's evaluating coaches, auditing what we have, doing a clean-out in our school facility to, to, you know, make sure that we've made optimal use of everything we have, may not have remembered buying, etc. Have we, are those things that are a regular part of the program? Again, the cleaning out, auditing our processes, and evaluating of coaches as an overall program idea, I was wondering if you could speak to that at all?
As far as the coaches go, there's an evaluation process for the coaches. There's a postseason meeting each, each season where the coaches have an evaluation done. As far as equipment go, we're always, you know, maintaining, you know, just knowing what we have on... we have on, on hand for what we need in case things break or when you need, you know, for example, a soccer net might rip and you need a new net. You can't, you know, wait for a PO to be approved and ones come in the mail. You have to have a couple on, on hand. So, we have storage facilities, you know, on campus with things like that where we keep note of what's available. Is there anything else specifically you're referring to?
No, just, I, I guess, you know, when it comes to topics of uniforms, when it comes to topics of equipment, that we, everything is accounted for, everything is being used or it's known that it's there, we don't need to purchase more, that idea.
So, so for uniforms, we take a pretty thorough inventory on what's handed out. We don't just, you know, throw shirts out to, to the kids, you know? Each student is assigned a specific number and at the end of the season, they're expected to hand that back in and we make note of it. If students don't hand it in when they're supposed to, we track them down and make sure we get that and keep track of what we have on hand, what's missing. Sometimes we may have to purchase additional uniforms to, not, not a full set, but just to fill in if we're missing a couple. We also have a stadium systems is one of our vendors who collects all of our uniforms for us. Well, we collect them from the students, but then we give them to them and they launder, recondition and store them and inventory all of them for us as well.
Good, good to know. And you, you bring up before the idea of the nets. I was wondering what happens with the, because this is, I know, something we've had back and forth about regarding what happens with monies raised and how those get expended and how they get accounted for. So, with those ticket sales, you know, obviously excellent how they cover, fully the cover of the cost of the police, but then I believe there's a good 23,000 or so left per school. I, and if I'm reading this correctly, it's to be used at the discretion of the administration of the school, but there's otherwise no accounting of it. So, I was wondering, how has the money been spent? Has it been fully expended? What, what goes on with that?
The money has not been, has not been spent out. It stays in a district account, so it is accounted for if it, if and when it does get spent.
Okay. But that, would that be the kind of thing where you, that's the money that you go to? In the perfect example you just gave of, you know, a soccer net gets ripped, it's not like you can wait?
No, no, no. Those, those types of purchases are made with the athletic budget, with the normal funds that we have. I think it was page six. Out of those $280,000 that was allocated to Ludlow, for example, nets and equipment supplies like that would come out of that account.
Okay. My last two questions are for the end of this, which is pages 32 and 33. So, for page 32, budget accomplishments, number one, thank you. I think it's always good for us to hear, you know, a summary of, you know, the, the analysis of the past year, what went through, and obviously, these were things that were positives. But what are you looking to for next year? What do you see as some of the big asks, efficiencies you're pursuing? You know, again, you know, I give the example that the 12-month secretarial support, I'm guessing that that was a positive. So, what kind of asks do you think you're looking for in this upcoming budget?
The, the 12-month secretary was, was huge. It was a, a very big addition and help to the, to the program. The main thing that we're asking for next year is not anything as far as more monetary or, you know, more funds for the budget. It was more streamlining some of the processes. The, you know, the point we noted on page 33 was the streamlining of those budgets. So, for example, for right now, if we have a co-op where we need uniforms or equipment for, a lot of times, we're getting a purchase order or we're getting a quote and then we're splitting that quote. So, I'm getting a PO from my funds and Gina would get a PO for her funds and then we'd submit both POs in order to pay for whatever that, you know, piece of equipment or whatever is we need for that co-op. It'd be much easier and streamlined and transparent if we had a separate account for that, for all co-ops. Now, we don't need extra money for it. It would just be money from our, you know, already allocated funds that would go into that rather than just sitting in the ones just for our particular schools.
Yeah. Ms. Parnas, you had me at, we're not going to be asking for any additional money, but thank you for all the rest of the color. So, except, I may interject, we may need to budget for two separate hockey teams next year. We're just coming from a hockey meeting earlier and our program grew, which was the positive, but we may have grown out of the co-op status. So, that may be something we have to budget for. Thank you.
The other, the other thing, just to keep on your radar also, is the, the company that we contract out to provide us with our athletic trainers is having a very difficult time finding a new trainer for Ward. And it's a problem that's existing across the state. A lot of other districts are having the same issue. And what districts have found is if they bring the position in-house, then they're able to offer more money to the trainer and get more applicants for the position. So, that is something that may come down the road in order for us to have trainers full-time at both schools in the future.
So, then what is Ward doing for the current season as injuries don't take a timeout?
I generally have a loud voice, so these are usually not necessary. We are piecemealing a per diem trainer daily and we're getting a total of 40 hours a week, which is what we're contracted for. But today was a perfect example. We had a freshman soccer game get canceled. The service made a decision not to send anybody, but I had students that wanted evaluations, students that needed preventative care. And when I reached out, they just said, "We looked at your schedule and we knew you didn't have any formal games, so we canceled you for today." And we took somebody and moved, moved them to another site. So, today was not ideal, but most days were covered. There's no continuity. There's no relationships being built. You know, injuries and, and high school kids, they rely on some of those relationships. It's been difficult. I'm like waiting at the training room every day, waiting to see who shows up. We've met some phenomenal young professionals. We know what the challenges are. We just, we just need to explore, like Todd said, possibly bringing it in-house.
Thank you. And yes, thank you for the, putting, getting it on our radar. That does help. Last question is on the page 33, the collaborate with Central Office to ensure facility upgrades. I was wondering what facility upgrades you might be targeting for this coming budget?
Well, the ones I was referring to are, you know, for Ludlow are specifically the concession stand that we're hoping to build out the second level. Yep. And also the, the completion of the scoreboard being installed and, yes. So, those are the main things that continue the collaboration with.
And Ward?
I mean, we would always like more turf space, but, you know, there, there are a few little, little issues around the facilities that need some upgrading, some just care maintenance of what we have and some replacement things. And I'm only five weeks there, but been meeting with Angeles like weekly to discuss what's in the five-year plan, the short-term plan and, and what we're, what we can kind of fit in.
Thank you.
Any, Ms. Kelly?
All right. There were actually two follow-up questions to some questions that Ms. Max and Cannelly had. The first one was, when you mentioned the hockey teams, I know you were probably talking about the boys hockey team, but pardon my ignorance, I don't know if, can you still have a co-op for the girls team and a non-co-op for the boys team? Like, that's...
Yes.
Right. And we would not be talking about two teams for the girls. That would still be one.
Right. It's really based on the numbers and the boys co-op team has outgrown the co-op status.
Okay. Just double checking on that. And then, if we can go back to, and again, I apologize, this might be a Courtney question. I was a little unclear on the athletic ticket revenues where she was saying how, how that money's accounted for, like that's not paying for like the ripped soccer net and stuff like that. So, I'm still unclear how that's spent and how it's accounted for. I just, I don't, again, don't know if that's a Courtney question or...
I mean, it's an internal account that's, Courtney may be able to better answer that. That I, Courtney, do you want to take that? Your accounting of that?
Ms. Laborius?
I'm sorry, I'm just not sure if you're referring to what's in a student activity account versus what's running through the operation, operating budget.
It's, it's neither. The student activity accounts are in each school. This is a, an account where we, we accept the money, you know, a particular side of the game and then we deposit it, but I believe it goes to Central Office. I don't actually make the deposits, I'm not sure.
I will have to get back to you on that. I do apologize that I don't know. I thought when you were asking the question, it was about the student activity report that we had.
No, it was about the ticket sales. So, we, that's straight cat, I'm all cash, electronic, whatever now, but that's profit. It paid for the, the security, then the rest is profit and there's no accounting for where it is. And then, quite frankly, if, if, now I know COVID put a stop on that, but prior to that, I assume that there were similar profit numbers and I don't know where they're accounted for.
I will have to, it is accounted for. And I'm, it's likely showing up in the grant budget and it's offsetting an expense, probably in athletics, but I will, I will have that for the Friday packet as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laborius. Mr. Asa?
Sorry. Another follow-up on this. Refresh our memory, because I know recent, in the last couple of years, you remember coming and saying you raised the ticket prices, correct? So, I guess a more poignant question is, what was the point of that? Like, the, the point of getting more money for the tickets if we don't necessarily know where it's going?
It was the, before, there was, we only charged adults and the students were free with their student ID. So, we moved it to be in line with the other schools in the, in our conference, which is, we're still very low compared to some of the other ones. We are $5 for adults and $3 for students for most games. And that money, you know, was, back then, was thought, the thought process was to raise money for the additional things that the budget was, we were not able to purchase through the regular school budget.
So, what you're saying, though, is that that hasn't been, you haven't been able to do that then because you haven't had free access to that money? Is that a fair statement?
No, I think there's access to the money. There hasn't been a, a large need for it the past couple of years. Our budget has been able to, our budget increases over the past couple of years has provided us with what we needed and we haven't tapped into that as far as I know. I don't know, like if, like what Courtney said, if it was used for other expenses.
Yeah. So, I guess, I guess the, the board voted to give $19,000 or whatever more of a surplus to uniforms, but we had $54,000 of revenue in ticket sales. So, why couldn't we have used? I guess my question is, not questioning you, but in general, why, why weren't we using that money and why were we redirecting surplus to uniforms if, if we potentially had money from ticket sales, if that's what it's really supposed to help to do?
Yeah. We could definitely work with Courtney to use those funds for that rather than shifting money in the future.
Okay. And I would just back up Ms. Kelly's question to the finance department. I would, I would love to get that information in a Friday packet. If we, if we sent $19,000 of surplus to athletics, but they had that or more sitting in an account from ticket sales, I think it would be worthwhile noting that.
And if I could just follow up on that a little bit, just to, I, I would want to make sure the account is closed out at the end of the year and what happens to it in the cases where we have some money left over?
I would agree with that. And just for the record, I, I fully support the idea of this money and the ticket sales and coming in, but I'm sure as heck hoping that we're using it every year and we're putting it towards what you guys need for our student athletes at our facilities.
Agreed. We don't, you know, we've had parents come concerned about the state of, you know, uniforms and if there's, I would hate to think that there's money just sitting in an account from ticket sales that was not expended for athletics at the end of the year. So, Ms. Laborius will, will be giving an update to the board in a Friday packet and if we have any questions, we will follow up. Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thank you. Ooh, whoa. Hello. Sorry. It's good. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I'm going to start with your accomplishments because I went back to the pre-COVID chart there. And there has been just a significant increase in how our kids are doing and performing as a district from our pre-COVID year even. And I'm just, want to say congratulations to you guys and to all our families and kids for just their commitment and dedication to our program. So, that was the first thing. I don't, can we go on to these bigger charts? Oh, okay. Because I didn't know if we can move on to that. I'm on to the bigger ones and going back to Mrs. Max and Cannelly's connection and just looking towards next year, just on the equipment waterfall one, just, I assume, but just to confirm that as of this point for '23, '24, both schools went over this and that these are the amounts that you're looking for in terms of the capital, the equipment, not anticipating any changes there or, at this point anyway, that this was what we would expect to see for budgetary request for '23, '24?
At this point, yes.
And then at the uniforms, I know there's been, you ordered a bunch of uniforms and I was just wondering, is there, did they come? Like, I know there's been, depending on where you order them from, was there a shipping delay or like, did, did they arrive? Do we have them, all of that?
The vast majority of them have come. For us, we didn't get one set for the fall that we were waiting on. They're on back order, but all the other ones that we have ordered are here. We're waiting on a couple of other ones for the winter that were ordered, but I think that's it at this point.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. My last question was more in line with the trainer and staffing in general, because I was thinking about this today, but we don't go over generally and some of this is just our coaching staff and how that plays into all of this. I know that's a separate and the stipends and whatnot, but I'd like to get your general feel of how we're doing in terms of being able, like posting, what needs to be posted through HR, being able to recruit, retain, how you're feeling about the coaching staff, count, not only count and being able to fully staff everyone appropriately, but just as there's changeover, how, how you feel about staff?
That's a great question. It is getting more challenging every year, I think, like every other industry to find coaches to fill some of these positions. I think there has to be a strong look at what their stipends are. They have not changed in many, many years and in my opinion, many of them are underpaid for what they're, for the work and effort and time that they're putting in, season in, season out. And not only during the season, a lot of these coaches are working outside of the season as well where they're not receiving any stipend at all, let alone the, the small one that they're getting for their actual season of work. On top of that, we have some very generous coaches that are working full-time coaching positions, but splitting their stipend with other coaches because they, they are doing it for the greater good of the team and they want more coaches on staff, so the, the team, you know, hopefully does better and the coaches have, or and the, the students have more coaches on their staff. So, I think that definitely needs to be looked at along with the other stipend positions as far as, you know, our clock operators and line judges and things like that, where we're paying a rate that I don't know when it was established, well before I started here, but that has not been changed in a very long time.
We fully staff right now for all levels, freshman JV, varsity for all of our teams for at least fall at this point?
For the fall, we are, yes.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. So, that's something, just know that I'm interested in continuing to talk about in terms of going forward and ensuring that we have the staff that we need.
May I have a quick follow-up to that? Once again, back to my question regarding budget requests. If you're saying that there is a need for great, for more, a larger coaching staff, is that an additional thing that we can expect to see presented as something you're going to be, well, obviously, you advocate first to the superintendent to add to the budget, but that that's something that we need to have on our radar as well?
I'm not sure exactly how that works because that is, I think, negotiated maybe with the union, the teachers' union, because it's part of their contract, so I'm not exactly sure how that would work.
The, the add, no, 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 the stipend fee, but the adding of a position, I don't believe that's a contract issue. That's a, we're adding a coach, it would be at a certain level. Isn't that correct? So, this is something that if there's a need, that the argument would need to be made to Central Office to have it as a budget addition?
Thank you for bringing that up then, then absolutely.
Any other questions?
No, but I'm going to go back to the balance. In the uniform section where it says, I might know this better, but, than some people may, but in terms of when you say new home and away, are you're specifically speaking varsity? Is that correct? Designate specifically a sub-varsity team?
That's correct.
Which usually it's varsity though, right?
Usually varsity, although, for example, track would be every participant and cross-country, every participant.
So... So I'm just wondering, I mean, if you look at our waterfall and you go out however many years, by the time a uniform gets to a freshman, it's probably like, could be like 10 years old or eight, pretty old, right? Is there any thought in terms of, you know, doing a catch-up into the sub-varsity at this point with anything that we might have available where really needed? Because I know that we have had some freshman teams that are really old. So is there a thought to that?
We have had to do that for a couple of sports.
Oh, you have done it?
Yeah, we had to do that for boys' basketball, I believe, a couple of years ago. And we did it for volleyball this year, for girls' volleyball. At this point, we've done a lot of the catch-up work, where teams at the sub-varsity level are really only getting uniforms that are a few years old, if that. Nobody's getting uniforms that are, you know, six, seven, eight, 10 years old at this point.
Excellent to hear. Thank you so much.
Ms. Asa?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo on Mrs. Max and Cannelli's kind of been trying to make the point. You know, last year, we sat here and we went through this presentation and many of us, if not all of us, said, be sure to bring us everything you need. And I know you have to go through the, the budget process with the superintendent first, but, you know, I think what's the best-case scenario is for this board to know everything that we need to make sure that our sports teams and our athletes are top-notch, as can, as can be, and provided what they need. So, for example, things like these positions and whatnot. If there is anything that there's any question about, I just urge both of you to find the answers and make sure that, we're only a couple of months away from budget build. So please, you know, I for one, as a board member, want to support, you know, if we can do this fiscally responsibly and add money and it, and there's a cause and there's a reason, then I'll support it. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That was a, a good point that now that I know is an option, we will definitely be putting forward. Thank you.
Any other questions? Before I let you go, I'm going to just ask Mr. Papa George, I'm gonna put him on the spot, even though for the capital waterfall, he's up next. The Ludlow concession stand was brought up, and I know that you've just been doing some exploratory work at that facility. I don't know if there's anything that you would like to share. I know you've shared it with the board in past meetings, but just in the context of this discussion, it might be helpful to put it on the record again.
So unfortunately, I don't have a number as of yet. We have contracted with an architect who met with actually Mr. Parnas and myself out at the site. We walked the site, we gave feedback to the architect, and he's in the current stage of coming together with a plan. It's taking a little bit more time, because the concession stand as it is, is kind of, it's, it's pretty much what he's referring to as a gray area, because technically, we should have bathrooms, a bathroom capacity that meets a full, a full stadium, and we don't. We have two bathrooms that have single use at that place. So there's a lot of coded questions that have come up when we're working through this, that he's trying to get answers and figure out best solutions for it to keep us at a, as low of a number as possible, but to come up with what we feel is needed at the field.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George. And I wasn't expecting for a number, but I just wanted to be out there that you are looking at that facility. The board had put, I forget the number, $120,000, I think, to that building a few years ago, that was reallocated, you know, basically during our budgetary needs and during the pandemic, and also upon further exploration of that building. As you said, it was noted that there were certain other items that needed to be done in order to bring the building up to code. So I just wanted out there that it is still on, very much on the board's radar, and that staff is doing work to, to look at meeting those needs at Ludlow. As far as the turf at Ward, I want you to know that you are heard, and we will take that into consideration as we, as we move forward on our capital planning. Mr. Asa?
Yeah, sorry, one more thing. So there was, a while back, there was a tour that Mr. Parnas and the principal were on regarding some of the facilities at Ludlow. We, we hadn't, I don't believe we'd had a, the similar tour at Ward yet. But as we talk about things like concession stands and whatnot, you know, I just want to say that if, if there are needs, I know the weight room was looked at, the locker rooms, there was complaints about the, the sizes and what, and I know there's only so much we can do structurally with our footprint. We, we're, but I just want to make sure that those items that are being raised by parents and athletes are being translated to our operations director, and at least those discussions are happening. And then whether it gets to the board or not, but I would just ask that before we leave here tonight.
Yeah, we, we, when we refer to the concession build-out, we're talking about concession, but also the, when we met with the architect, it was about putting in a locker room and a weight room inside of that building.
Go ahead, Ms. Jacobson.
And adding in bathrooms?
That was part of the discussion, but again, the footprint and budget might make that a challenge. But I guess, it has to be to code, so if that's what code is, then I guess that has to be done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any last questions for athletic directors?
I welcome you to come take a tour at Ward, if you didn't get one.
We will definitely be reaching out for that tour. We toured Ludlow at the end of last school year, and we, those of us, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa and I, were on the tour, said that we wanted to do a similar tour at Ward, just to see the facility and hear what your needs might be. So we will be reaching out.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are welcome to stay, but
Thank you.
Have a nice night, and thank you for all your work, and good luck to all of our teams. Okay, we're moving on to capital waterfall update. Mr. Papa George?
Good evening, everyone. So before I start, I just wanted to take a minute and say that we have, we, we have been welcoming and we're working with the town. They have established a working facilities committee to help budget and foresee issues that the town facilities may need, and the town facilities as well. So it's become a joint effort with both parties. I know we focus on a 10-year facilities plan. They've cut that down. They're looking at a five-years of facilities plan. But I think working with them and being able to come up with actual numbers and figuring out where things fit to fit within the whole town aspect is really helpful, and it's been great for us. That being said, you have your waterfall in front of you that you're sort of used to seeing. Last year was the first year seeing it in that format, but we felt that it was, it worked out well, so we continued with it. In addition, what you don't have in front of you, but what we've worked on for the towns meeting, is we actually do what's, what we're referring to as a cash flow chart. So even though you see projects on the waterfall with total amounts there, we break out the actual cash flow, so the spending per year for the town. Working again with the facilities committee and the first select woman's office, we've been given a number of, a target number of 12.5 million to try to stay within, to keep the town budget within what they plan to spend each year and what they plan to, I'm sorry.
Bond.
Bond each year. Thank you. So with that being said, you have in front of you your waterfall chart. The, the biggest changes you'll see in there is we had to move a lot of projects around, mainly because of the air conditioning projects. We wanted to be able to get the phasing of the air conditioning projects in to get the buildings air-conditioned, but in the meantime, stay within the 12.5 million bonding cap that we were asked to stay within. So we were able to do that by moving some projects around and also by taking some of the projects that we reevaluated off of the capital waterfall and moving them into the one-twos and threes priority for budgets that you guys will see shortly. That being said, I have, I can run through a couple of things here, but some highlights on this would be the, the brownish, or supposed to be orange, but I think it looks more brown. It's supposed to be, those are projects that were moved from the operate, from the capital waterfall to the operating budget lines. So they'll fall on that one-twos and threes list. And then the green ones are highlighted, just so you can, they jump out at you, because you'll see, as I got questioned by the principal at Ludlow this afternoon, it says Fairfield-Ludlow High School, and it says zeroed out project for air conditioning, and he was very concerned about that. But you'll see that the reason they're highlighted there is because they were there, and you guys saw them there and passed, but we wanted to, we moved them into the district-wide. So they, they're still on the waterfall, they're just fall under the district-wide category instead of the independent schools, but I didn't want to just push, pull them off and have people wonder what happened to them. I can go through quickly, if you'd like, some of the bigger moves on this. The first one being the Phase Four air conditioning project. We moved out to the 25, 26 start school year. That was the, oh, I'm sorry, we moved it from 25, 26 to 28, 29. That was to add some space and give us the room needed between the two high schools as the largest projects for air conditioning. The next one on the list is, and please feel free to stop me at any point if you have a question. The next one on the list is the Dwight project. Again, to make room for air conditioning and to figure out what the best resolution for Dwight would be, we moved that from 25, 26 to the 29, 30 school, starting project year. Again, that, we, we held that number in there as a placeholder still, and we understand that with the board's decisions and making and moving around, there, there may be need to either move that earlier in the project or later in the project, depending on where the board lands with decisions.
Quick question?
Mrs. Max Cannelli?
I just, this isn't so much for me, I just want to repeat this for clarity. So the fact that we have two massive projects of Dwight and Jennings scheduled for the same year for additions and renovations, that is purely a placeholder so that we don't lose track of the money, but the year is not really what's pertinent?
Correct. That, as, as we all know, the waterfall is a live document and things move and adjust to meet the needs of the district. We did not want to lose track of those projects, so we wanted to keep them on there and keep them very much alive at this point. So they are, at this point, a placeholder. We didn't want to go too far out with them, but as you said, a placeholder at this point.
And just to, to follow up on that, last year, the board voted on the waterfall in preparation of the presentation during the capital planning workshop, as Mr. Papa George reported. The town is not taking that approach anymore. There was a capital waterfall meeting scheduled for, I think, September 28th. That meeting has been canceled. The first select woman is going to be having these working groups just around capital planning. I don't think the first meeting has been set yet, as far as I know, but I'm...
It was set for the end of this month, so it's coming up.
Okay, so there, there's gonna be discussions in the next few months. You know, this might become before us again, if the number should change, and if we have any updates based on the information that comes out of those meetings. So just putting, Ms. Max and Cannelli.
So could you explain again the process? Because part, part of the idea of why we did capital this way, and I could be wrong about this, but was to have a definitive date to have the conversation, so that this aspect of the budget was resolved more quickly than the operating budget?
We are, we are still going to be doing that. From the Board of Ed, we are still having these discussions. This is before us, and I'm looking for board feedback in terms of priority, the year that we want to see these projects done, that this, you know, the HVAC. When Mr. Papa George, you might recall, presented the waterfall last fall, it was a longer timeline for the HVAC. I think it was over the course of 10 years. The board indicated that it wanted to shorten that timeline. When that decision was made, we didn't have the guidance from the first select woman's office in terms of how much bonding capacity there would be. We now know that that number is roughly 12.5 million dollars a year as a guide for school projects. Now, that might, you know, change. There might be one year that more money will be spent on a school project, and it's a town project, and that is the purpose of the working groups that the first select woman will be leading.
Just as a reminder, has there been a standard, or slightly more standard average of what the bonding number was that the Board of Ed would get approved?
Prior to that?
So, so you're now saying that there's kind of, and which I had just heard too, that they announced a number of 12.5. Past years, what, what is there, do we have any sense of an average prior? In terms of, so to address our needs, what were we normally doing?
We can, we can pull the projects and get an average off of that. Prior to the 12.5, when I actually took this position, I asked for that number several times, and we were never actually given, this is what you should be approximately around. So my understanding was, we approved projects, we went and either got approved or not approved through the town bodies.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, is this a change of practice or not? That's all I'm trying to figure out. Ms. Asa?
So I think, in a way, yes. But in, in what so far has been somewhat of a welcome way, where as Mr. Papa George just said, for the first time, we're actually given a number. So in the, in the years past, when we do a project, a school build for 25 million dollars, that 25 million dollars wasn't all spent in one year. It's spread out over several years. So, you know, that, that, when you look at some of those things and you look at the historical trends of what we were spending, it, it doesn't appear at first glance to be way out of line. What it does bring up is that this board has looked to fast-track and move forward an 80-something million dollar HVAC project with 80 million dollars on the books for two schools as well. And so that's what we're having to work through and, and balance, and that's the purpose of what the town did, was we, we had these meetings and we set that first year, and now looking for the next, you know, four years out of this five years. So there's not much more to add there, but to the point, yes, those big numbers that we used to have were spread out, which is why Mr. Papa George has worked on the cash flow, to try and see how that level sets to the 12 and a half per year.
Ms. Kelly?
I apologize. I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up, or, but all of us have been inundated with emails about the air conditioning situation at Dwight, and I don't know, you know, there's been asks for split units, or I, I'd be lying if I said I knew 100% of what exactly was being asked for, other than help, and lots of it, and immediate. So I don't know if, is that something that, that gets funded through a waterfall chart? Is that something that would have to be a budget ask in next year's budget? Like, I don't know how we go about if we were to address fixing that or addressing it at all. I don't know, I just don't know where we would see that.
So to give you some, I guess for a back, lack of a better term, back, back of the num, back of the napkin numbers. Dwight Elementary School has 22 classrooms, five of which have split units in them. The average cost of a split room, to install a split unit in a classroom is about $15,000. So the, to outfit the rest of the building with split units, we're looking at approximately $255,000. That's without taking into account controllability, so adding controls to these units. It doesn't include evaluating the current electrical intake for the building and seeing if we need to do a grid upgrade on that building, which I, I would say, just from what we did at Holland, I apologize, Sherman, when we did the air conditioning there, we required an electrical upgrade just to be, meet the demands of the equipment. So we're looking at probably another $200,000 for an electrical upgrade to that building. So you're looking at around $455,000 for what we would consider a temporary fix to a heating problem, air conditioning problem. And that brings into account, the split units come with their own challenges, with indoor air quality concerns, and they are not bringing in fresh air into the building. They're only circulating continuously classroom air that's already been in the building. So there are some indoor quality issues, combined with the safety of the building as well, because when you have a cold room that has an air conditioning unit, and then you have a warm hallway, you're creating a zone that has a tendency to get condensation, then we start having slippery floors and other issues.
Dr. Tracy, and then Mrs. Max Cannelli.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that Mr. Papa George was kind enough to put together a letter specifically addressing the Dwight issues, a copy which has gone to the board members as well as to town officials, the folks who've been getting the emails from parents expressing their concern. So there, it, it's not an immediate fix, but there is a, a detailed and specific answer out there for your review.
Mrs. Max Cannelli?
And just so that, because, and I enormously appreciate that the Dwight parents are not just including the board, because this is an issue that's much beyond us in terms of when we're talking about this bonding and we're making project decisions. But when you also consider Woods, Osborne Hill, North Stratfield, Tomlinson, Ludlow, and Ward, and Walter Fitzgerald, oh, that's an upgrade, okay, hopefully, because they have AC, correct?
There's parts of that. There's parts of that building that aren't, don't have air conditioning, but yes.
So we'd be looking at a total, if we want to, you know, ensure equity, what would be the total number of classrooms then that would need this?
I don't have that in front of me.
So for, for the twenty, well, but they don't need it for twenty-two, they would need it for how many classrooms at Dwight? Seventeen.
Seventeen.
So, that's almost half a million at that one school for split units. And similar number undoubtedly at Jennings, similar sized school, which has nothing, and then all of these other schools.
Yeah, Jennings has, uh, two classrooms that have split units, so they...
And the rest none.
The rest are none. Um, Woods has area, I'm sorry, if we're talking elementary.
I know Woods and Tomlinson have part, Ledlow and, and Ward have part, so that's not entire schools, but, again, ballpark idea of classrooms.
To add split units or to air condition?
To air condition split units, because they currently are toasty.
I'd have to get a number to you, I wouldn't feel comfortable throwing them out there.
Two-hundred, three-hundred? Yeah. Okay, so I, again, I'm just, I, thank you. And it's easy to, and again, I utterly feel, because I completely agree that that, that is beastly, um, for, to try to be educating kids and to be working in that environment, but, um, it, and that's why we are trying to make a focus of this, and I, I, I think I probably share the sentiments of the board, I wish I could snap my fingers and make it happen right now. Um, so we're going to do the best we can to bring about change quickly. Thank you.
Ms. Asa, did you have a follow-up or question? I thought I saw a hand.
Yeah, but I, I just wanted Mr. Papa George to also include that, um, as part of the district-wide air conditioning pro, program here, that the reasons that Dwight and Jennings are not included in this is because it's assumed that if, when, if and when we do the building renovation, that would be done at that time, because why would we do stuff to a building that is potentially going to have a major renovation or addition?
Correct, that's been our standard practice in the past.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm going to start with the Brown items that were, um, and thank you for the explanation, because that was going to be one of my questions, I didn't understand that the Brown was moving into operating, so my first question on that is, is it moving into operating in the same year that we had on last year's waterfall, or has there been movement in the year in which the Brown will move from this into operating?
On the one-twos and threes priority list, we don't, we don't put years next to them, we base them on priority of the district. So obviously, number one priorities are priorities that will make the budget for the, attempt to make the budget for this year. Priority twos will be if there is room in the budget to move something up, and then, uh, we will reevaluate priorities, twos and threes, and reevaluate and move them up in the following years to number one status.
So while this change may open up space on the waterfall, it may jeopardize projects that were on the waterfall from getting done?
It could if there was a priority that rose above it, but I don't, I believe that the ones that we have moved off of the waterfall to the one-twos and threes operating are ones that either we felt that we did have some time to work with them, or we felt that they would need to be prioritized higher than some of the existing ones on the one-twos and three list.
Okay, so just quickly adding that up from what was actually on for these projects, just so we know and other people are aware, it adds up to roughly two million of those projects coming off of a waterfall and into operating, so there shouldn't be surprises on increases pertaining to those if and when we included them into the budget of about, roughly two million dollars.
Uh, correct, so we, doing, in taking this approach, we did realize that there will, there will most likely be, uh, in, uh, hopefully not as significant, but an increase in our operating requests each year.
Something that needs to be explained going forward, um, as we get, go up. Um, a couple more questions on things. The North Stratfield vestibule, I noticed, had a really large increase in the change in the cost, so is there a reason particular for that? Is it change in scope? Is it just a relook at what was needed there or what?
It, it was a reevaluation of the numbers that were originally assigned to it.
Big difference.
The change of scope did not change, and we also were able to, uh, receive better numbers and better number, then also timelines for some of the materials that are used for that type of project.
Okay, um, so I'll just get to the A.C. now. So, can you just explain, um, from what we had last year and what we have here now, there's a bit, there's a change in order and a change in cost and a change in timeline in summary?
So, change in cost is based on the change in the order, so we escalate out based on the year that the project would start, so that's where you'll, you're seeing the significant changes in the cost. Uh, change in order was again to try to make that twelve point five million cash flow for each year. We had to make some adjustments to the start dates and when projects would run. We also had to divide out some of the projects, like originally, we looked at doing each high school as a single year, then we divided in two, and now we've figured that the best, the best pri, uh, approach would be to do a three-year project on the high schools to get, be able to get it completed under the time and the cost.
Okay, and then, can you, um, why is there no, and maybe this is something we went over before, but why was there no state reimbursement included for Ward or Walter Fitzgerald?
Um, I would apologize if there isn't, because there should have been.
So we've got reimbursement listed for the other phases, but not Phase Four or Phase Five? It says zero. And I was wondering, is there a particular reason, or is that just in, possibly an error?
Uh, that is an error, because on my cash flow chart, I am showing for Ledlow High School, we're showing approximately five point five million dollar reimbursement, and for Ward, we're looking at approximately six point nine million reimbursement.
Okay, so the columns then probably need to be updated?
Yes.
Um, because that's a big difference, um, in terms of the totals that end up on the bottom of that. So that's good news, I'm glad that it was, um, just an error, so. And then the last question before I comment is, we have Ward as Phase Four and Walter Fitzgerald as Phase Five, however, Ward is after Walter Fitzgerald on this timeline, so does that need to be flipped?
I apologize, we, so what we did is we, we flipped the project start date for Walter Fitzgerald, and I didn't even look at the actual phase number on there. So yeah, we should probably change the Phase Four and Phase Five call out on there to...
So Walter Fitzgerald would move up a column, Ward would fall down a column?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, got some of that, um, cleared out. So, um, I guess this is just a balancing act, and I'm sure these conversations are happening, but I am going to note that we're going from three-phase to five, from what we approved last year. Um, going out from five years to eight under this plan, so three years longer, and that that's an increase in cost to do that. So we're going to pay more to do it later, is the thinking at this point.
Absolutely, I can't disagree with you.
Okay, um, I think that's something that we need to think about. Um, whoops, sorry.
Ms. Asa.
I agree with the idea that a couple percentage points of increased cost, but we also have to, um, know where the money tree, we can only shake it so much, so. Uh, sometimes those, moving it out further, um, yes, may come with extended costs, but we also have to be able to afford it from the taxpayer.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, it's all in here anyway at some point, right? It's a, it's a ba, it's a difference of, do you want to do it faster and more expensive on an annual basis, or take longer to do it and cost more overall at the end?
In combining it with the town side projects.
Yeah.
Yes.
I understand, I understand that. Um, that was all I had at this point on that, um, but thank you for this.
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, hi, um, uh, I have a quest, I have a question about Dwight. I have a question about the costs for Dwight and Jennings that both seem to have gone up even more than they were last year. Um, so I know, like, Dwight was fifty, two-fifty, um, after the initial seed money, and now it's, uh, is it fifty-seven, I think?
Fifty-seven. So it, our, the, the new waterfall that we have, as soon as we move the start date, it automatically adds the escalation based on the year. So that's why wherever, as soon as, if we were to move it earlier, it would automatically bring it down at that point. So we use the best number we have based on the twenty-twenty, no, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-one year, and that's where we enter our budget numbers in, and then where we adjust up or down is where it escalates or de-escalates based on that.
Got it. So I just think it's something, I mean, I think it's something that kind of Mrs. Jacobson already touched on, but just the fact that the longer we string this out, the more it will cost, and, and I completely understand that we have certain constraints that have been put on us, that we need to try to do our best to stick to the limits that have been given, but at the end of the day, just how much more is that going to be costing us over time? Um, I think it's just something to consider.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I would like us to think about, you know, having Dwight and Jennings as a placeholder where they are right now. This board's going to need to not have it be a placeholder. We either need to commit to not doing these renovations eight ye, for another eight years, or talk about whether or not they should be moved forward. And I, I, I'm looking to you for some feedback on this, because, um, as Mr. Asa or whoever will be representing the board in these capital planning workshops with the town, they're going to be looking to us for answers. Um, you know, are we, is this board comfortable having Jennings and Dwight being where they are on this waterfall as it stands before us? And I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot right now, and I'm not looking for an answer, but, um, you know, these are, these are tough decisions, and, um, but it is our job to make these decisions and factor in, you know, where, where we're going to put our priority. Um, and I know it's not based on, based on the limitations that we have been given right now by the town. Mr. Peterson.
I just want to point out for the benefit of the public that these things can't be considered by us, at least in my opinion, outside of the context of the redistricting work that we're about to begin.
Mrs. Max and Canelli.
First of all, just to your wording, Mrs. Vitale, that where they are in the waterfall right now is artificial, so that we're, we're not talking about twenty-twenty-eight unless that's what we then commit to, that those are placeholder years. So it, it's one thing to do them or not, it's another thing to place them. So just, your wording about that, I just, but that, but that's it, so I'm just pointing that out, so that in terms of not where they are, because they aren't anywhere exactly right now, there's a, a financial number commitment that we have affixed to them based on the year where they are currently falling. But then the second question I have is, and I genuinely don't know this, what is, what would be the role of the Facilities Committee? Are they looking to bring a recommendation to the full board or multiple recommendations that we then work through? Or are we going to start, and I don't know how else to say this, and, and I apologize if it sounds negative, are we just going to start here at the board table from thin air and start throwing spaghetti at the wall? So, how, what is, what should be our process in this so that it's effectively addressed?
Ms. Asa, you joined up?
Yeah, and I think this is a very good point that you make, and, and one that is the chair of the Facilities Committee I'm struggling with, um, because I have sat at this table that I believe most of this work should be done by the full board, um, and what work can be done at Facility Committee, the nitty-gritty, is, is a great place to do that. But I think what I would like, from the facility standpoint, stand, is what does the board feel? Because are we going to want to have special workshop meetings where we are all nine of us doing it, which several of people at this table have expressed that's the way they want to do it? And then from there, delegate to the Facilities Committee, do these tasks. And if that is the case, I'm fully prepared to do that and lead that charge. I get the feeling from this board that there's some hesitation, and I understandable hesitation, for the Facilities Committee to start doing this work and bringing the recommendations, and then we sit at the board table and rehash everything that was done. So, I would be interested in feedback, I don't know if it's necessarily here or by email or whatever method you want to do, so we can kind of gauge what the majority of the board, how they want to handle this.
Thank you, Ms. Asa, and I, I agree with that. I think that, you know, these are really big decisions, a lot of money, um, affecting our community for years to come. And, um, Mr. Peterson, thank you for bringing up the context of redistricting. You know, it's been, redistricting's been brought up tying to the racial imbalance plan, but if there was no racial imbalance plan, based on these numbers and what we are hearing about the condition of our buildings and looking at the projections and the utilization rates of our buildings, we would be having this discussion anyway. And I think it's really, really important for the community to understand that if the state statute went away tomorrow, we would still need to be looking at this. We would still need to be looking at, um, how we're using our buildings, how we're spending money on these capital projects, um, and we're looking, you know, looking forward, they're difficult, nobody wants to have them. I mean, sitting here, looking, you know, my kids went to Dwight, I could, I could write those emails. My kids went to Ledlow, I could write some of those emails. I think everyone at this table could basically share a story of, um, struggling with the heat in our school buildings and wanting to wish we could change it sooner rather than later. Um, and we've moved forward, and this board has worked very hard over the years to move these renovation projects forward, and it's here before us again. Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Um, to your point about not wanting to, I mean, wanting and yet not wanting to have these conversations, and, and thank you, Mr. Asa, that, that is helpful, I mean, those are the two choices, so that is helpful. But when you say we don't want to have these conversations, I think it helps to make clear, and I'm not sure if you or Mr. Peterson would be the best to address this, there are town bodies that are insisting on this conversation, and rightfully so, considering the tens of millions of dollars that are involved. So I don't know if one of you could provide some color to the expectation of other town bodies of our having this conversation?
Well, I mean, I think that I can speak to it just from the, the, um, the capital planning workshops that we had, and Mr. Asa, you know, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, that representatives from other town bodies were expecting us to have this conversation, asked us point-blank, well, if you're moving forward with air conditioning, you know that that means that some things may have to come over, off of your waterfall. And they have come off of our waterfall, and now we're going to have to deal with them in the operating budget. Some things might need to be delayed. Um, some things that we might want to add maybe are not being added right now. You know, we heard turf fields and renovations for athletic facilities that we don't see on the waterfall right now. Um, and, you know, when I say we don't want to have them, I think just because they're difficult, but we, but we need to, and there has been an expectation from other town bodies that when we come to them with these funding requests, that we have answers to these questions. Ms. Asa.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear, from the, from the capital planning, I, I don't want it to sound like other town bodies are telling us we need to, um, do X, Y, or Z. So just, just to be clear there, we're, we're not getting pressure from town bodies to look at closing a school, redistrict, racial imbalance. What I hope to come out of this is collaboration with the town, so we're all on the same page and we're, we're doing projects that make sense. But I think it's, to Ms. Vitale's point about none of us want to have these conversations, well, I do want to have the conversations, but the emotional side of me, you know, obviously is, plays in, so I think that's more what, what the point, but, you know...
I don't want to have them, just for the record, because I just wish the money was there, that we could just say, done, easy peasy, we're going to build, we're going to renovate this school, we're going to put in air conditioning in all of our buildings, we're going to fast-track it, and it's going to be done. So let me put it in context, if I wish that we didn't have to have these conversations, because I wish the money was just readily available. I know that that's not reality, but, uh, that's, uh, with the background for those, those, I don't want it to be reading too much into that.
And, and just to finish my thought, um, you know, we, we have had these discussions with other town bodies about redistricting for the last several school projects, right? And, you know, this board or previous boards have, have, have heard and talked about, what are you going to do about efficiently using your facilities in order for us to fund projects? what are you going to do about efficiently using your facilities in order for us to fund projects that meet the requirements for the changes you're saying need to be made? And those changes have not been made year after year after year for many reasons. But I will say that it should be no surprise that over the years for when we pitch building projects, you know, we have to be mindful that it's finally time to see how we're going to do this, because we have two major building projects on this waterfall. And if we're going to try and justify anything, we're going to have to have a plan.
Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, so getting back to your question on feedback on Dwight and Jennings. So just to be clear, though, we didn't move them into a twenty thirty, twenty thirty five, but they were on the waterfall for twenty six and twenty seven, so I don't know how they made their way into this far right column here. So that wasn't us, in case anyone's wondering about that.
Can I interject, can I just say a point to that?
Right.
We did, because as a board, we sat here and we voted that we wanted to fast track the AC program in five years. And this board unanimously said, we want to move that, knowing the dollar amount. So if you did, if if any of us didn't think that that was going to affect the placement on the timeline of fifty and thirty million dollar projects, I think we just need to be clear about that.
We had the air air conditioning on last year's waterfall and they were still in a placeholder year. So can I finish my statement?
Go ahead, Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Peterson, you're not going to be able to have an answer to this question until we get to June and we have done the analysis and work on our buildings. So there's not going to be an answer to this question until we actually are having, looking at actual analysis numbers on redistricting plans. I don't know how we could have an answer to this question before that point.
Ms. Kelly. Give you a little more time to think. I agree in that, but I also, I think one of the fundamental points that Ms. Vitale was making that regardless of other town bodies, regardless of racial imbalance, like, we know, we don't need that much more analysis to know what our utilization rates are. We have those numbers. And I feel like that's going to play a huge part into, at least me, that's going to play a huge part into my decision making on what I think we should be doing. And I don't, I, I don't, I feel like we keep saying, we need to wait, we need to wait, we need to wait, we need to wait, and this has to happen first. The first domino has to fall at some point. And I think we, we have a lot of information at our hands, we don't have all of it. But I think we just need to, to, I personally think we do have, we can, we can work with it and we have, in my mind, I'm just plugging ahead with the, we would be doing this regardless. We have that one, you know, our utilization numbers are staring us in the face and I think it's telling a very compelling story that requires immediate action. Mr. Peterson.
Just one detail that we haven't talked about too much in terms of the spacing of projects. Maybe this is something that Mr. Papa George can comment on. In terms of the bandwidth we have as, as an administration for managing projects, we, if we, if we did everything in one year, we would have no way to have effective management of that many projects of that. Right, I mean, like, there's, there's some level of bandwidth in terms of what we can handle administratively every year as well.
That, that is correct, so I don't, moving forwards and saying we're going to do all these projects next summer would not be realistic from management standpoint. That being said, we do utilize engineers to oversee a lot of the larger projects and we, we're also at, I don't want to say mercy, but at, at the will of the town, because a lot of these projects will go to a building committee. So the town has to be able to man building committees for multiple projects at one time. We couldn't just dump all of these projects onto the standing building committee.
Mr. Asa.
Mr. Papa George, and maybe we can talk about this in facilities, but this may be a good time to see about talking to the SLAM collaborative about, for, so we're prepared when we start to begin these discussions, whether it's in committee or as the full board in special meetings, what the implications would be of, you know, let's say, taking a school offline. So do you have any idea of the, the costs associated with getting preliminary information on that to start? So we have a little bit more data to start those talks to see, and so we can see what the financial implications would be?
I, I apologize, I do have that paperwork from SLAM collaborative, but I do not have it with me tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I follow up on that?
Yep.
They did run that scenario already for both Dwight and Jennings, so I would assume it would be a matter of updating current numbers into that existing scenario and tweaking it a bit. It wouldn't be starting from a scratch, they have run those test fits on Jennings and Dwight Prior.
Yes, I, I actually reached out to SLAM collaborative and I had a long conversation with them. And they had actually provided to Mr. Cummings some numbers to do some preliminary work on this. So they were able to forward all that information over to me.
Right, and they already had their conclusionary statements on that at that time, which may change, but that's already available to us.
And we did discuss this in facilities and we just got to the point of asking administration just to get an idea of what the costs would be, to get updated plans, see if they could work with the plans that we were working off of in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. But the facilities committee did not tell administration to move forward with that, decision of the full board. And we will get those numbers to you, because we didn't, we didn't budget for this redistricting work, you know, in the last budget cycle. So as we move forward, we just want the board to be updated in next steps in terms of bringing on SLAM to move forward with some updated plans. Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Um, since any discussion about renovations or redistricting and it's obviously tied to the utilization, two things that we haven't talked about at all is have we definitively made a decision about the ECC, which is a factor of this? And then also, and I don't know through the chair to Dr. Tracy, if at some point we can get any kind of feedback or analysis of how our CPP replay, move to the University of Bridgeport has gone, if that's something that has worked out well or we would in any way be looking to bring that back in-house anywhere. And I don't think anyone is prepared to speak to that right now, but if we're going to be talking about facility utilization, we need to have all the information and those are two additional topics.
Totally agree, Mrs. Maxon Canelli, and I spoke to Mr. Mancusi last week, just in terms about the ECC, you know, because that was a very big part of our planning in terms of, does it stay in one location? Does, does it go to two different schools? At the time, just to refresh everyone's memory, the board was looking at moving the ECC into Holland Hill and North Stratfield based on the latest projections we've received, you know, population is booming in the North Stratfield section and there are no longer seats. So some of the plans that might have worked in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty may or may not be accurate. It would be nice if we could just say that we can still use these, but there has been a shift within popul, within the population a little bit within town.
Except that if we're doing a redistricting, we can fit what we want where it's best suit. I'm, I'm not advocating for that, that's not, that's not my point. But if we're doing this and we're factoring in everything that we need facility space for, there's, there's no such thing as a school that's too crowded.
Agreed.
Because, and based on existing population. Again, not pushing for that, just saying.
And I was just stating based on where we were, refreshing everybody's memory for the plans that we had and the charge that we had. Those were the two elementary schools that we were looking at. But yes, that, that's a big part of the puzzle as well. And Mr. Mancusi was already giving the heads up and you can add the CPP onto that as well. Ms. Jacobson.
I have a follow up for Mr. Mancusi as well, and it may not be for tonight, but part of this is also in terms of utilization is what we're anticipating in terms of need for special programming or special ed spaces going forward. We've increased our numbers of classrooms needed for that purpose in recent years to a significant degree. And that's not included in what we got from our projections. So will there be any need for additional spaces going forward within the next ten, fifteen years for that? And I see him nodding yes, so, um, how many? So we're going to need to have an idea on that.
Can I?
Ms. Asa.
Just to Mr. Papa George for facilities, you know, I know they, it's a good point from Mrs. Jacobson, because one of the things that was determined was existing space and utilization. So we did get that list, but I think that's a very good point to, to make, to expand on.
Don't want to harbor on the housing issue that I've been bringing up for a really long time, but to also know that we're going to need a formula, and this is probably to Mr. Asa, we're going to need a formula to project growth in that area, because all that's in here is what we know today. So there isn't anything in here for unknown development for the next ten years. So what formula, looking back, are you going to apply going forward? Because that counts too, and that's not in here either. So I think there's a lot of things to consider in terms of that. And I don't know how you're going to, go ahead.
But I, I do believe in some of the SLAM work, they are using those algorithms and calculations and, and formulas.
They did, they included the ones that they know about now. What we don't know is what we don't know, and that has to be included. It's not going to stop tomorrow, right? So anyway, that's a conversation going forward, but just throwing out the ideas of what we need to look at and consider going forward. Because they had, they did have in the presentation, if things change or continue on with housing, this may change what we have here, that's in the presentation.
So I guess if, if you're asking facilities that how, how, how do you suggest, and we don't have to answer this now, how do you suggest we plan for something that we can't know?
I'll be in touch.
When, and, and actually, to follow up on that, I had the, the same question of is it, is, are we charging the facilities committee with looking around at the properties and where is their land that could possibly be built on? I, I don't.
Wait, I'm not.
Understand how to do that.
How do we do that? So the same way we do projections, the same way we do other things that WebSLAM does, is they look back to look forward. And the best we could possibly do for an algorithm and for a formula is to look back to look forward. So if you look back into years before what we had and what we known from two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, where we are now, the best we could probably do at this point is to apply that growth factor forward.
We, we can talk more about this, because you, you also have to take into consideration saturation and, you know, if, is a certain area that had this growth, can you expect that same growth in certain areas?
We know that as well, we know where. At this point, we know where, that there is much more saturation in the McKinley-Holland Hill area than there is in the Mill Hill area in terms of that, in terms of that things. But you're right, you won't know, but you have to build it in somewhere, you can't ignore it.
Well, I, I think it also comes into the fact that when we do a redistricting, you know, when we get to that point, that it is not a permanent solution. Our goal will be to make it as long term as possible, but we also have to set the expectations that ten years from now, it may need to be looked at again and redone.
We built in headroom, so knowing that we're going to have to look at the headroom capacities as well.
That's why we don't budget, we don't plan to a hundred percent, because we know that it's good to have flexible space for new programs and just changing, changing in the demographics that you can't necessarily know. Ms. Maxon Canelli.
And I would also say to that point, one of the things that the racial imbalance plan did, which I thought was, I was thrilled to actually see it in writing, not that anything about the plan thrills me, but that idea of those, a new development coming in is not necessarily going where what we consider the neighborhood school to be allocated to. And that kind of, that specifically explicitly addresses Mrs. Jacobson's point. And so that's already been anticipated, that what we're saying with new developments is you're going to put that there. Well, that's not necessarily the school you're going to. So that is something that we've already factored into our planning.
Yeah, and we've discussed that really on facilities from the very first presentation with SLAM. And we're going to be looking at that sooner rather than later. I, I don't want to get too far off, we're going, you know, away from the waterfall. Any, any other questions on the projects that are on the waterfall? All right, so we're going to be using this document moving forward as it stands right now in our meetings with other town bodies. Is the board comfortable with that right now? Ms. Jacobson.
When are those meetings, are they open to public, are they recorded, are there minutes? Like, what, what is the structure of this?
They were not, the ones that were held in the spring were not open to the public. I don't think minutes were taken, I don't know if the format's going to be changing for.
Their agendas posted, like, when are these?
I don't think there was a posted agenda, though, for those meetings.
Just going to, I'm just going to advocate that, Mr. Asa, like, if we're going to be having conversations about our facilities and redistricting and building projects and all of that, that these should be publicly noticed meetings with minutes.
For the record, I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm sure you're not.
We don't run these meetings, so.
Exactly, well, maybe we shouldn't participate unless that's going to be the case, so.
Board of Finance, I believe that the, I think it was Board of Finance, there were so many meetings that I dialed into this week, that there was an expectation that the meetings moving forward were going to be open to the public. I can't speak to minutes and agendas, as Mr. Asa said, we don't run these meetings, but we will definitely, we will definitely pass that information forward.
We have promised the public, you know, transparency and engagement and understanding. And I think when we have a bunch of meetings going on that pertain to these matters that are not known and transparent, recorded, public, whatever have you, that it, it, it becomes a problem. So I would appreciate if we translate that message, thank you.
And just as a follow up to that, I agree, I mean, I think this easily could have fallen kind of through the cracks because it involved participants from multiple town bodies. So maybe just no one exactly owned the idea that while it's not an official town body in and of itself, I don't know if it needs to be granted a name so that then certain FOI things needs to, need to come into play. But I couldn't agree with Mrs. Jacobson more, these should be noticed to the public, there should be minutes, there should be agenda. And, you know, this should be, you know, widely known that these conversations are happening, because that's, I mean, it's, we've been talking about it constantly of how can we get our website more clear so that the information is out there? So, you know, maybe we're going to have to take the lead on advocating, but I can't imagine anyone objecting, but just, I, I agree with Mrs. Jacobson.
We will definitely pass that along, I agree with you. Anybody else?
Can I, can I make one more? I had one more thing on my.
Absolutely, Mr. Papa George.
I had one more comment on my list to make. I just wanted to, circling back to the air conditioning projects real quick. We were told that we would get information mid to end of July for state reimbursement on those projects. Then we were told we would get it sometime in August, and now we are in September and have not received any information yet. We continue to work and reach out to the state to get these, to get updated information. At this time, we've decided we're going to move forwards with the engineering for phase one. What that would mean is that down the road, when, when and if the information comes out for state reimbursement, we may have to apply for special legislation, because we would be on the start of the project. But we don't feel we should hesitate to start the projects just because we have not received information from the state yet.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Um, I think that, you know, last I looked, they were saying the guidance would be coming out sometime in the fall. But as you said, we've been, the envelope has been pushed on that.
Can I just thank Mr. Papa George for the work that he presented tonight? This is the tip of a very large iceberg and I appreciate all the work that went in underneath it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George, for your continuing work on this. I know it, it changes quite often and appreciate, you know, your due diligence on this. And just ask if you could just make those couple of corrections that Ms. Jacobson pointed out, just so we can get the typos corrected, that would be helpful.
We will be right on that.
Thank you.
And then just, sorry, Christine, can I just make a request that we don't take down the ones on the operations page that are older and just kind of build upon it so we can track changes over time when you decide, when it's finalized and you post it?
Absolutely.
Thanks so much.
And one more, just, as we're, in October, the board is going to be having some discussions about preliminary ideas for next fiscal year's budget. If we possible, just to get a list, an updated list of the priority one and two maintenance list, just so we have an idea of what you're looking at as we start thinking about next year's budget.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we have no old business, so we're moving on to new business, financial review of two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two fiscal year and fourth quarter report. Ms. Laborius? Dr. Tracy, I don't know, I haven't given you the chance to make any opening remarks, I don't know, feel free to jump in at any time.
Courtney Laborius, Chief Financial Officer, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the year end results. So you have in your packets, you'll see a memo surround, followed by a series of financial reports. These are the pre-audited accounting of the twenty one, twenty two expenditures by major classification. The projected expenditures and budget transfer requests were approved by the board on June twenty third. And the attached document shows the approved and, and final transfers, which are in column G, as well as the year end balances by major classification. So the year began with a full budget headcount and projected need for busing, assuming we'd be running all of our buses. Based on historical trends, we do in the personnel budget account for attrition with a formula that includes a series of assumptions that did hold true pre-COVID. a formula that includes a series of assumptions that did hold true pre-COVID times but are no longer, for the last two years, were trending off of the assumptions because we weren't able to fill vacancies at the rates that we had hoped, that we had done in the past. In addition, we had most double the number of retirees that we anticipated. For that reason, we had a large surplus in the personnel account category, as well as in the fixed fee account category, which we had been trending to project to the board and to the public, starting from Q1. And throughout the year, we had been anticipating that we'd be able to fill the remaining vacancies as we got through the year. We ended Q4 on the personnel side close to what we were projecting in Q3 because unfortunately we closed the year with those vacancies. In addition, in that personnel category is another 400,000 or so related to the retiree, of which only half of that was a budgeted savings because we had more retirees than originally budgeted. In addition, the fixed charges, which includes all of our benefits, so associated with staffing, we had saving, associated savings on the insurance and other benefits. And in the bottom line, I think we presented back to the board on June 23rd that we anticipated a $75,000 balance at year-end, which is now at 540, and that's what we were reporting to the state in our EDOT 101 for the September 1st deadline. What changed between when we last spoke and today? Two major things, and you can see it if you track in the detail, if you look at the page that follows the summary, there is detail, the detail is similar to the report that you've seen in the past, but I'm just gonna walk you through how it changed and what I wanted to highlight for you. So the first column is the budget column, and it's in the same major classifications that you vote on the transfers for and what you've typically seen. So personnel, fixed charges, which are the benefits, pupil personnel, school expenses, support expenses, maintenance, and then capital outlay. So the first column is budget, and then the second column is showing you the actuals. So that's important to show you at year-end because the budget minus the actuals is our balance. I think it's important to show you the adopted budget to the actuals because that's what you started the year thinking we would do, we thought that we would do, and then the actuals is where we landed. In the projected balance, which was shared on 6/28 versus the actual balance, and the resulting transfers that were done to report out our year-end financials. So for example, walking through the personnel expenses, our budget was 119 million, 119.4. We spent 117.9. Our projected balance was about 1.5, rounding, our actual balance was 1.5, so we transferred that 1.5, but there's a plus or minus variance as we finalized insurance bills, you know, finalized the summer assignments and any other things that come in at year-end. Fixed charges, similarly, we were at about 1.1 million and we ended at about 1.1 in transfers. Those are the two big drivers in what's anomalous about this year that had not happened in years prior to COVID, the fact that we had that much savings on our personnel side. And I just want to reiterate that that's, as we all lived, an unfortunate occurrence. It's at the cost of having par educators in our classes in spite of the best efforts for recruitment and some, a lot of solutions that our teachers were able to do and our administration was able to do to do as best we could with the resources we had, and it was challenging. On the pupil personnel side, our original budget was 15.1 and our year-end actuals were 16.5. That's one of the bigger swings in the projected year-end, 2.1 million down to 1.4 at year-end. So what changed? What changed was the result of two main factors in special ed, transportation encumbrances that didn't come to fruition in bills, as well as balances in the line called sped expenses. If you peel back the sped expenses, what's driving the change from June to actual year-end close was in what I call support expenses, so professional and related services, as well as in settlements. And why is this, was this a challenging year for special ed from a financial perspective? For a few reasons. Our excess cost, we budgeted at 70 and then 72%. At the end of the day, in March, the state reimbursed us at 82%, which was a good thing, but it remained very challenging for us that we get that reimbursement at year-end. That's a difference of about $500,000 from what was budgeted versus what we ended up receiving. In addition, we booked about, almost $500,000 of ARP IDEA one-time revenue to offset the tuition expenses. And then, in addition to that, we had settlements that were much higher and of more complicated nature last year, and I don't want to misspeak, so I'm gonna invite Mr. Mancusi if there are additional questions about this. But we were still holding out the obligation to pay those settlements, but we don't book them in the system until they become signed agreements. And as the year came to a close, we didn't finalize, I believe, about four or five of those agreements, and so they couldn't be carried in last year's budget. And in addition to that, transportation, transportation this year, we had about an $800,000 surplus. We were always projecting about 550. Again, there were about 10 bus drivers that we were short throughout the year, and we had hopes that we would fill those positions, those drivers. And to our best efforts, to the credit of our transportation director, we did best efforts and kept the buses running to the extent that we would say families felt satisfactory last year. And in spite of those challenges, and unfortunately, those challenges are continuing into the start of this year with the driver shortage. Fairfield's not unique in that. I would say we are a little bit different, just in my personal experience and also talking to colleagues, in that, for students doing a good job in Fairfield relative to other districts with compensation, and so it's retaining some of our drivers, and from what we hear anecdotally, they're happy working with us. So that said, it's still a challenge. So those are the two biggest factors that drove that amount. And why did it go from 75 to 500? Well, if you recall, when I met with you in June, I knew that there were some things that were in flux as we closed the year. And I did give the option 1 and option 2, and I heard the board, we'd like to do the appropriate spend-out that we're requesting, and we'd like to consider if there's additional funds to give that back to the town. And so that's what you're seeing here, is we were able to spend out that 652,000 that was authorized, which was for athletic uniforms that you heard about today, so much-needed IT equipment, and HVAC projects, some security upgrades, and all of the things that we spoke about at that June 23rd meeting, we were able to accomplish, as well as our regular summer projects because of the magnitude of this year's surplus related to personnel. The next question I just want to preemptively answer, and then I'll take the actual questions, is related to this year's budget. Because I can understand why you would say, well, if we closed with a surplus of $540,000, what does that mean for next year's budget that we built while we were in the process of, you know, Q3, really? And I'll say, I look forward to having that conversation with the board at ongoing meetings. One of the requests you're gonna see tonight through the board chair was to have some reporting on a special ed in some detail regularly, and we're prepared to show you what a proposed report that Mr. Mancusi has put together would look like so that we can assure, you know, you that we're monitoring the trend in the special ed outplacements and that you'll be aware of what we know as we know it. Number one. Number two, on the transportation side, Mr. Papa George and I will be meeting regularly with the Director of Transportation, so we're marrying the finance and the management piece, so that if there continues to be a driver shortage, we're gonna report that back to the board in real time. And my proposal would be also to make you aware of any budget transfers that result from that in real time, so that there's, you know, real-time reporting of that information, not at the end of the quarter. And so with that said, I welcome questions.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
Just one quick question. So with your discussing about the signing of agreements, so have those four to five cases been signed now?
Mr. Mancusi.
We're in the, excuse me, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education, we're in the process of working out the details of several settlement agreements right now.
So are you guessing, I don't like to put you in a position of guessing, are we already over budget? Or already trending towards over budget? Or was this anticipated by last January, by this past January?
I would not say we're over budget right now, but we're gonna be close to budget at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you. Trying to find what the correct distance from the microphone is. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for coming to Finance Committee last week where we had a preview of some of these things. I hope you don't mind, I'm gonna cover some of the same ground again, that, more questions popped into my brain after our talk. I did want to talk a little bit about the transportation, or it looks like the swing from the surplus that you projected at the end of June and the actual was something like $190,000. It seems like a lot, and one of the things that I kept thinking back about was that you said, and you mentioned it here, that going forward, you're gonna be meeting more regularly with the Transportation Department about this. I guess I'm curious about what the procedure was this year that allowed this surplus to build up? Because I also noticed, I went back just to make sure I was right about some things that you said in June, and in June, you mentioned that in the first year that you came here, there was an issue with Mrs. Munzel's last budget of kind of over-encumbering on the part of transportation. I'm curious how all that, logistically, is working out between transportation and finance?
I think we do have a good solution for this year. I know we'll be in, and that I know, I believe we'll be in a good place. It was, I think, my first year, and Angela's, Mr. Papa George's first year over transportation, as well as our Transportation Director, Mr. Schneider's first year of operating post-COVID with still some COVID-challenged situations. Logistically, requisitions are entered and funds get encumbered, so that's your contract, your obligation to pay. In a good year, we pay for the buses that we run, and our contract says, you know, you pay for the buses you run. Our Transportation Director was able to do some things to where we were able to pay for what we needed, or what we were using based on a tiered structure. So it's not as straightforward as saying, I'm running 10 buses times $10 equals 100. And so they encumbered the full contract amount, made some modifications to the encumbrances based on the experience to date, meaning based on the information they knew about the lack of drivers. And when it came to truing that up at year-end, it's a process we need to fix.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's, my fundamental question is how, you know, on June 23rd, school was done. There were no more, you know, nothing extracurricular we were gonna need buses for, so I guess how did, how did we miss $190,000 of encumbrances that at that point should just have been added to surplus?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that, you know, we're putting in place is that we're gonna review the, what's called the aging report that comes directly from the vendor, for student, and go through on a monthly basis and say, okay, if any of these individual invoices are in dispute, we need to put that in writing and what our dispute is immediately, you know, if there's concerns, because it's complicated, and not hold on to any of the bills for anything any longer than 30 days, and that way I'll have real-time information, so I won't have outstanding encumbrances for invoices that we're waiting to see, because we'll all be on the same page, being finance, transportation, and the vendor of what's due to them and their balance. So I'm confident that that will resolve our problem of knowing what an outstanding liability is and being able to work together to have Munis reflect that, so that's what we're reporting out to the board.
I think what Mr. Peterson is asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is prior to you, how was it done? And from my knowledge of past meetings with Ms. Munzel and how she did things, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, her staff, which maybe is now your staff, I don't know if it's the same people, were the ones that would make the changes once we knew, and Ms. Munzel, correct me if I'm wrong again, didn't necessarily reduce the encumbrance early on, right?
So I can't, I can speak for what I know of what my staff did. My staff did work closely with the Transportation Department to help refine the projections. It is my take, and I've communicated this, you know, with the Director of Transportation, that if you own a contract, you've got to monitor that contract and you've got to report on, I can see what the expenditures are, I can see what the historical expenditures were as of, you know, May or June, it's all data. And if I ask a question of, you know, why every June have you spent 80% of your budget, but this year it's only 60? We have to work together. I can't just take down those encumbrances unless I have an answer that says those bills are not due. So I'm more than, it is the Transportation Director's responsibility to manage that in Munis, meaning his own contracts. However, if there's additional training that's needed, I will certainly provide that for him.
No, I mean, I guess ultimately, it's kind of what I was getting to. It's surprising to me, I didn't know that there was this disconnect between the systems. Are you saying that the Transportation Department, how are these encumbrances put in Munis in the end? Like, so that I get to a point where you could see them?
Yeah, so the Transportation Department enters requisitions, the requisitions go through a workflow that's approved by the Transportation Director, and then a group of people depending on the level. So a requisition becomes a contract once it goes through that workflow process, and it turns into an encumbrance. Any modifications to the requisition come from those end-users. So if you were gonna modify a contract by reducing it, it would come from the office that's responsible for overseeing the contract.
And I want to applaud you for what it seems like is taking steps to what seems like a pretty large disconnect here. I guess it's, again, going over my mind what we talked about the other day, it seems to me that communication this year kind of collapsed between finance and transportation. And maybe that's an overstatement, but, I mean, the fact that $190,000 in encumbrances was, I guess, invisible to finance, but not invisible to transportation is a little concerning.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, you know, we did our best to get that information, and now that we're doing a monthly regular check-in and we'll report out, I'm sure it will improve.
Ms. Asa?
So with regard, I guess I'm trying to figure out, at Q3, you said the number was projected 550, roughly?
Yes, that's the Transportation Director's projection, was 534, I believe, I can look and see.
That's a projection, or that's the difference of what was spent and what was encumbered?
That's a projection. Now, I always look at the projection against the encumbrance and the expenditures at any given time in every single line of the budget. And so when you look at the expenditures to date, and there's a large number of encumbrances outstanding, especially compared to the historical, I would go back to a director and say, your projection's out of line, you know, can you explain why? And that's my practice, and that continues to be my practice and will continue to be so. In this case, I didn't have a lens into what invoices were outstanding until I reached out directly to the provider of STA, the Provider of Service, and said, I'd like to see your aging report. And when I did, and I saw that the balances were out of line, I made some adjustments and corrected them.
Okay, so I guess what I'm getting at is that at Q3, we saw that $550,000, but we didn't incorporate that into the projected surplus and carried it forward to June, or did, I mean, did we?
We did, yes.
So we used that money towards this 652 spend-out?
That's correct, yeah, correct, yeah.
And...
And then it... And then it grew after that.
Well, of course it grew, because from Q3 to Q4, if you're running how many less buses?
10 less buses. But between, my point is, between June 23rd, when the year was already ended, to today, that $550,000 grew to $800,000. Yes, there was a disconnect.
Okay, so the 550 at Q3 was 550 on June 20-something, and you're saying it grew to 800 then, but wouldn't, I guess I'm trying to figure out how?
No, it was 600 and change on June 23rd. Again, I look at the trends, I looked at what was spent year-to-date, and every given year prior to this, and I looked at what was outstanding for encumbrances, and I said, this is odd, we need to make an adjustment. I had multiple inquiries, and until I got the aging report from the STA, which is our service provider, then I could make those adjustments for outstanding liabilities not being what was encumbered. So, yes, I do feel confident with that aging report and the information of the invoices that are actually outstanding coming centrally to Central Office will have a better handle on the transportation expenses.
I'm sorry, what was, it was 800 some, what was that number?
804,000 surplus in Transportation.
Just a quick follow-up. With 10 less buses, was there any issue of getting kids to their places? I see not, because I'm wondering, can we just have 10 less buses? Or not, no, okay, all right. It says, no, that's not my purview. No, okay, so there was issues then, and, okay, all right, that's what's going, thank you.
Can I just finish my question? So, I just, sorry, I had to use a calculator, because I can't do this in my head. So going from 800 and whatever you told me to 550, and dividing that by three for the last three months of the year, the fourth quarter, that comes using 10 buses to roughly $84,000. What does a bus cost?
Angela's is about 80K, right, per bus? Is that right?
Okay, so would it not be understandable to think if it's roughly, I mean, I'm coming up with more, so my numbers might be off a little bit, but let's say 80 grand a bus times 10 buses for three months roughly equates to the difference between what was in Q3 and what it ended up with?
Yeah, I think we don't have a challenge with what Q3 to Q4 was. I think the challenge is that on June 23rd, to present, it changed, so.
Well, we do have it, so, you know, I see what you're saying. What I'm trying to get at is, how did we not know we had, expecting an extra $300,000 that we could have used? The spendout could have been 952 instead of 652.
I think what I'm saying is, on the June 23rd report, I was reporting out $600,000 of surplus on the bus, which is what I just, you know, said, and we did count on that. What drove the fact that we had $500,000 left over was 200,000 of that appeared after the fact, and I can't close out an obligation that a director tells me that I have unless I have evidence to show why not. And when I got that evidence, I did that so that I can assert to, attest to the financials that I provided to the state. So yes, you're correct, the difference between Q3 and Q4 was appropriately accounted for, and that was a good thing. My attempt here is to explain something that happened, and in all honesty, you know, we had staff turnover as well in my office, so I do believe that the process, the Director of Transportation deserves to be commended for the buses that he ran this year. I take responsibility for the disconnect in the financials, and my attempt to explain is also an attempt to show why I don't believe this will be in this position next year, because I'm going to take responsibility for a different approach to the process.
Okay, and thank you. And so we should expect probably similar outcomes based on the fact that we're running more than, I think, more than 10 less buses.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, which is why I do want to report this to the Board regularly, so I welcome the feedback. The fuel will cost more too, so we're monitoring that separately. So fuel's going up, unfortunately, the bus driver shortage is there. You know, we've been told by the Director that he's hopeful, because of this new class that did accelerated certification of the drivers, that this may change into the fall, and we're still hopeful that that's the case.
Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I just want to continue with one thing about that. I mean, we're heading into budget season, and, you know, as we've noticed, like, you know, we're coming out of some unusual years, but from reports on the ground, buses are full, rides, you know, route to long. I want to make sure that we understand that going into the next budget season, I don't know that we want to budget assuming that we're going to be 10 buses down. So I guess, in terms of that transition, you know, I just think it's important to discuss that ahead of budget season and as we go into budget season, because I would like to budget appropriately for that.
Yeah, and we do, like last year, have some time built into the calendar with Dr. Tracy and with, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting his name, our new superintendent, Mr. Testani, I apologize. Some time built into the calendar to meet with the Board early on again to get feedback about what you'd like to see us look into, so.
Any other questions? Ms. Kelly.
Hi. My first one is, honestly, I'm embarrassed that I have to ask it, but I just, for my own, you have the appropriate, the adopted budget, and then you have the amended budget numbers. So the 119 in Personnel Services versus the 117 amended. When we get next year's budget book, will we see 119 or 117?
You'll see both. You'll see last year's budget and last year's, or last year's actuals, yeah.
Okay, and when we compare year-over-year, we compare to?
Both.
Both, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's meaningful to compare to the actuals, it's also meaningful to look at the budget in the case of buses, for example, if you want to know, well, why did you go up by 3% budget to budget, but yet your actuals dropped, and we have that conversation?
Okay. And then, is it fair to say that with the 539 surplus that we're showing now, and the approximate 600 some, 50, I had a number 659, but I think you had a smaller one, with the spendout that we all agreed to do, is it fair to say that there really was a surplus of about 1.2 that we decided as a board to spend out 650,000 of that?
I have to be careful about how I answer that, because, so, yes and no. Because the 650K that you did as spendout, if you look year-over-year, we would typically do that at year-end, because it's within an appropriate category. But yes, it wasn't what was originally authorized in the budget on a line-by-line basis, so you could say that that was, you know, excess money that wasn't accounted for in the original budget, so that could be a way that you could term it, yes.
Okay. And then, I know you mentioned that there was, and we don't have to go over this right now, but that there was going to be more documentation and supporting hopefully that of the sped expenses, and I know that hopefully, we all talked in budget season that we trued up those numbers this year, so I would hope, when you say that we're hopefully going to be on budget, I sure as hell hope so too, pardon my French, sorry, that was a slip. Woo, I could have slipped a lot worse, sorry. So, but my concern with the way that this budget, next year's budget was constructed was more in the personnel expenses, especially when it came to this schedule of the vacancies and the retirements. So if we're putting in requests for hopefully more, and I know you mentioned it in the summary, that there would probably be more reporting on vacancies, but this is absolutely a schedule I would love to see updated more often, and to give us, because I have a feeling this extra 400 that we budgeted is going to be a significant amount more in our favor, if you will.
And through the Chair, to the Chair of the Finance Committee, if the Finance Committee is an appropriate place to have that, I'm happy to build a schedule that will give more information to actual staffing, vacancies, and then the assumptions in the budget about attrition versus what we're actually seeing in attrition.
That works. Mr. Asa.
Sorry, Ms. Laborious, I just have one follow-up question, because I was just trying to make some notes. Regarding Transportation, can you explain, what's STA?
Oh, I apologize, First Student is what I meant to say, my former district contracted with Student Transportation Association, I apologize.
Oh, you threw me for a loop on that one, since I was trying to figure out, is this something I should know?
For the public, our wonderful colleagues at First Student, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so, okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson.
I'm just wondering what you thought, some of this also plays into the fact that in the somewhat unique situation that we were able to move some things out of operating into the ARP funds, that we typically wouldn't have had the option to, so that does play somewhat of a role in terms of the balances that we took things out of operating and moved them into the grant.
Correct, yes. Textbooks and HVAC and a few other items, yes.
Yeah, I think it's going to be challenging just to make comparisons from the last two years to hopefully next year. You know, we saw a surplus in certain areas, but as we said in Finance Committee, it was not necessarily for the benefit of the district from an operations standpoint. Running fewer buses, having kids on the bus longer, not having substitute teachers, not having paraprofessional supports, you know, that's not the way that we want to operate, not in the best educational interest of our students. So I would just ask, as we build next year's budget, we don't assume that this is going to be the norm. And I know that I say that, knowing full-on, as we've been hearing, that we're still facing staffing shortages from paraprofessionals to bus drivers to athletic trainers, and, you know, for human resources, I think that we need to have a discussion about just recruiting, and if there's something else that we should be doing, so we're not, hopefully, in this position next year. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Laborious.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So just to be clear, the, when does this money, or did it already get transferred to the town?
It is already reported to the town, and it is effectively transferred to the town.
Okay, so the, and I'm sorry for not understanding this, is the 539, 355 inclusive of the original 75, or is it an addition to?
Inclusive of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Laborious, for helping us keep track of all these numbers.
Moving on, adoption of policy, 5141, 21 students, administration of medication in the schools, medication, the typo there, in the schools, medication in the schools? Typo twice, okay. At the Board of Education, this is the motion, that the Board of Education adopt policy, 514121 students, administration of medication in the schools. Ms. Max and Canelli, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Ms. Max and Canelli?
First, very, very important to distinguish, you have two copies at your desk, at your table. You are looking at the copy that does not say enclosure number nine, so in making my motion, I was making my motion for the other one. I'll explain that difference in a minute, but if, so if you could just make sure you have the correct one in front of you, the one that is not labeled enclosure number nine, September 13th, 2022. I want the one that does not say enclosure number nine. Right, no red in the top right corner, if I could just, you can, there you go, Mr. Asa. So I will explain that this is, I had alerted the Board at our last meeting that this would be coming before you, and that we were asking for an immediate vote. I didn't get any questions in advance, but just again, as a, to reiterate, this is something that Jill Mitchell was very excited about. She brought us, she was show and tell at the Policy Committee, she had equipment, she was showing us usage. She was very pleased, most importantly, for the health of our students, that this would be a much easier method of dealing with our student athletes with type 1 diabetes, and that their coaches could be trained for equipment that would not be scary, we're not talking about needles, is the key. And so, number one, that is the idea of why we are looking for a one-and-done, because in fact, this is pertinent to a current student athlete in the current athletic season, one of our fall athletes. So, again, just explaining the timeline, and now let me explain the difference between the two drafts. If you look on page C, at the top where you see an authorized prescriber, so this was a little bit of a, okay, just as a procedure thing, that was not in the version voted on by the Policy Committee. This has been added in the last couple of hours based on last night's Board of Health meeting. It was noticed by one of the Board of Health members, that physician really should have been replaced with authorized prescriber, which I hope that makes sense. So again, that's the difference between the two drafts, and so that was the one I was making the motion to support, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Max and Canelli, any questions? Seeing none, we'll take it to the public. Any members of the public like to give comment on this? Seeing none. Back to the Board for a vote, all in favor. Motion carries 9-0. Thank you, Mrs. Max and Canelli, for moving this forward. I'm very excited to have the support for our student athletes that have the need, and to the Policy Committee. Okay, moving on, first reading of policy, 6148, instruction FAFSA completion rates.
Thank you. So this is on for a first read, so any questions can come to us before the next meeting. This is an odd title, I don't remember it being this long, but in any case, the reason that this policy is entirely black, this is an entirely new policy, which you could also see by the adopted date down at the bottom. This is something driven by state statute. This is something that the Policy Committee wrestled over quite a bit in terms of just how far did we want to go. We were not interested in pursuing a course where we were aggressively attempting to get our students to do this. We want to make sure that all of our students and our families know about the FAFSA, know about what they can get by virtue of the FAFSA, and we want to be able to educate our families about how they can get support from filling it out while not committing district staff to doing that, because that's not something our staff is necessarily trained in. But we really had our focus far more on the education concerning FAFSA than it was in pushing aggressively for a higher completion rate. And that's not necessarily the same as what other districts might be doing, but that was the direction that the Policy Committee took.
Mr. Asa.
Can you just touch on the last sentence and the relevance of that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, where did that, that was not wording we came up with, I think that was wording that came from the statutory language.
This is a statutory.
Okay.
Right, but again, we were not consistent with everything that was included in there. Again, we were more relaxed.
So, Mrs. Jacobson, maybe you know, is the undertone or premise of this to say that the district could accept gifts or get grants to help fund implementing this?
Well, the way that we've drafted this, we're not necessarily thinking, because our people services already do a lot of this with our high school kids, there are first aid nights, there are supports in place, so we made sure, and Mrs. Max and Canelli can correct me if I'm wrong, but we made sure that we were kind of putting into policy, what is our current practice, kind of, already, and that we were doing this. So just so for people who may not know, this is a policy that we are, have to have per state statute that recently passed, like every district has to have this completion FAFSA policy. It's not too specific what you have to have in it, but it's more about encouraging kids to complete the FAFSA. I would say that that last sentence is in the statute, but it's also, if you think about the materials, bringing in speakers, bringing in people who we might want to bring in at night, if there's funding needed for that, we could use that last sentence as a source of that. Printing materials, whatever it may be, so.
Finance experts.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
It just, it made me, since it's statutorily driven, I wondered if there was some grants in the pipeline for this that we could go for.
I don't recall that being any part of the conversation.
That's why they included the last sentence in the statute.
So again, as always, if anyone has any questions, because again, we did take a very definitive tact with this one in terms of being less aggressive, in terms of what we were pushing on our students, our families, and most importantly, our staff. So if you are looking around and comparing to other districts, or if you simply have any questions, if you could let me know in advance of the meeting, I always appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Max and Canelli. Okay, moving on, approval of minutes, at the Board of Education, approve the August 30th, 2022 Board of Education special.
30th, 2022 Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes. Can I have a motion? Ms. Curransey, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, to the board for vote, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Superintendent's report, Dr. Tracy.
Thank you. First of all, with respect to the first several days of, of opening school, I can report to you that we had a smooth and generally positive opening, and I'll talk about the pluses in a minute, but I do want to acknowledge the three areas of challenge that, that we face. We've already talked about transportation. The kids are getting to school, but the buses are full, the routes are a little bit longer than we would like, and we have just barely enough drivers to keep us going at this point. So that continues to be a challenge. I think you all know that staffing, at this point, is a seller's market, particularly when it comes to paraprofessionals. And despite the fact that Ms. Ingram and her team hired well over 70 teachers this year, we still have three vacancies as of today. I think we actually had a couple of departures since the school year began, so we're, we're trying to manage that down to zero as quickly as we can. Paraprofessionals, we had 30 vacancies as of today, and are now turning to contracted services to try to fill that gap. And then the third area of challenge, we've already talked about tonight, is the, the very hot days that we had, the first, the first week of school. And as I mentioned earlier, you have a note from Mr. Papa George specifically directed to the Dwight School parents, but it also has an attachment that talks about all the places we have air conditioning and where we don't. And you're well aware of the, the cost and the time that it takes to really solve that problem. I get a month, I get a daily weather forecast from a service that we subscribe to, and if I were ever confronted with dangerous temperature levels, we do have the option of closing school early. We try to be careful with that, because you're sending thousands of even young children back home to parents who may not all be expecting it. So it's not something that one does easily, but that is the only option short term if we're faced with super hunt days. Now, having said that, for those of you who were at the convocation, you know, we gave out 25-year service pins. Not everybody wanted to get it in front of hundreds of people, so I had the, the pleasure over the last week or so to, to take those pins around to people who were too shy to get up in front of all their colleagues. But in almost every case, I was able to hand it to people in front of some kids, and the kids always applauded. When, when, when I was able to say to them, I know you guys don't know what 25 years amounts to, but this person has been serving kids like you in this town for 25 years, and they all, they all clapped, so that was nice. Our middle school principals all reported that the implementation of the new block scheduling plan has gone well, and that doesn't always happen in, in school districts that make that change. And so they wanted to specifically thank their assistant principals, their teachers, their students, for all the accommodations that one has to make to shift to that arrangement. And Ms. Tiley in particular reported that the school seems calmer with less back and forth during the day because of the, the fewer longer periods. So that went well. Mr. Cavanna reported that Ward had its first face-to-face open house since 2019, and they were packed with a lot of people excited to see teachers and kids face-to-face for the first time. And everybody is expressing relief from the, the previous COVID regime, grateful for a return to normalcy, seamless, many smiles, excitement, ready for a great year together. These were some of the comments that came in from the principals. So that was opening of school. I do want to report on our plans to keep track of special ed out placements, and Mr. Mancusi, I think, is going to come forward and share with you a format that you have at your table, as to how we'd like to report to you on a month-to-month basis, what is happening in, in that arena. So Rob, if you will?
Hi, everybody, again. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education. This is just a proposed format to track the tuitions and settlements, and, and to be able to compare the budgeted amount to the encumbered amount, and then every month, year, and projected, every month you will get, you'll see numbers in there. We did it in this format, because this is similar to the format in the back of the budget book, on the tuition sheet that we do every year, so we wanted it to be familiar looking to you. If there's another format that you would prefer, you can let us know. But our plan is to monthly provide you with an update of this report.
Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you for this, this is great, and I appreciate that it matches in the back of the budget book, which helps, but, and maybe this isn't something we want to do on a monthly, but I think it would be great to know if we have people return, who may have been, not specifically a person, but you know what I'm saying? We had, you know, five kids in 18, 19, and two have come back. You know, I think there's, there's something worthy of us noting as a student, if, if that is the case, if some of the programming that we're building is helping, or just circumstances change, it is nice to know. We don't know the unique numbers here, so it is, I think, either in budgetary season or whatnot, how that, how that's faring too.
I will tell you, I am working on something to get you some information on some recent emergency placements we've had to make, that are new experiences for me, after 34 years. We were going to put a memo together for you to, to kind of help understand some of these numbers. And we can definitely get you the number of returns, we've had a lot of returns too. We continue to struggle, I will tell you. Learning loss continues to be a challenge, particularly in the area of literacy, but as you know, we're building a program, the Early Literacy Academy, with Margie Gillis and Literacy Howe, and, you know, I know Dr. Zavajansik and the regular education teachers are also getting very involved with Margie. So over time, I think our students are going, it's going to transform the way kids learn how to read, and it's going to catch a lot of struggling learners early on. And then obviously, we continue to struggle with, with mental health needs across the district. But, you know, our staff is working hard. It's, it's not made easier with the staffing shortage. Dr. Tracy talked about, particularly with the paras, we started the year 40 short, now we're down 30 paras. So we can safely man, or our, our CLCs particularly, we are working right now with three different agencies, and I've reached out to a fourth to contract with, with some support staff for this year, so we can make up for some of that loss, because it's significant, has a significant impact on, on running our programs.
Ms. Kelly, followed by Ms. Maxine Cannelly.
Hi, thank, thank you for this. I feel like I have seen, you've done something similar like this before around budget time, I think, for either other town bodies, or even for us. If I could be so bold as to just ask, maybe to have a little historical data on here, just so we can see it in context. I, I don't need 20 years' worth of data, and I, I don't, and I don't want to create too much work, but I just think, having at least one pre-pandemic year, and then what happened in, in the pandemic, I just think it would be nice to have a baseline, so we could see it historically where, where we shake out.
We definitely can do that, and I actually think that would be very helpful, because I've been saying that for years now, that COVID has really, really, really added a, a, an element of difficulty to special ed programming that we've not experienced before, so we can give you numbers to compare that.
Okay, and then if I could just ask one more thing, and I don't know if this would fall under you or not, but just because you had mentioned that we, we now have to go out pretty much to the market for paras, to help us with paras, that's obviously going to be an additional budget expense that we did not plan for, so I also think that might be a number worth keeping an eye on more closely, just to see how we are running. I know we might be saving money and that the spaces are empty, but, you know, is it costing us twice as much, three times as much as we budgeted? I don't know what that number is, but I just think it would be nice to, to have our finger on the pulse of that number.
We're working with HR, and we're working with Ms. Laborias's department on, you know, redirecting some of the open para salary money, so we can pay for.
We might run out, is what I'm saying, and I just want to know.
We'll, we'll keep track of it. So far, as of this morning, we feel that the savings from open positions are going to help us pay for, that's not, that's not happy news, but it is, it is the fact at this point.
What's happening is, you know, we hire somebody, but then somebody resigns, so it's, it's, it's a challenge, but we'll definitely keep you up to date.
Ms. Laborias looked like she wanted to say something to this, not to put you on the spot, but I saw you raise your hand in the back of the room, was there anything?
I think just to follow up on Ms. Kelly's point about this, just in terms of looking at our par educator support. I am. Sorry. No? It's a cool, it's Oz back there. I will speak louder, is that better? Just to really, the financial impact and the educational impact of this power shortage, I think it's something that we need to keep a close eye on moving forward, that might be saving personnel, but, you know, contracting out is not ideal. Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Thank you. And number one, I think this is a wonderful idea, so that we're kept apprised, no surprises, which I think is good for everybody, good news or bad news, no surprises. Two quick questions. One, does it concern you at all that the encumbered numbers, it's September 12th report, and the encumbered numbers are matching virtually the budgeted numbers?
We're watching it really closely.
But the point is that there is no trend ever where numbers as of now wouldn't end up going up?
You're correct.
Okay.
But I, I, yes, you're correct, but we will share information, particularly with the board, on some high-cost, you know, tuitions that we're working on right now.
Okay. And the second question, the second thing that came, or another thing that came out of COVID that had a significant budget hit, and which we weren't prepared for, was all of the testing. Has that slowed down because we've done the testing, but now we have to serve those needs? Or is the testing, I mean, we had to get a tremendous amount of, number of consultants because our current staff couldn't handle the testing load? Or the evaluating, altogether, testing and evaluating?
I anticipate we're going to have that challenge again this year, with the number of referrals that we have, and just talking to a school psychologist at one of our schools today, there's already been a number of initial referrals made. So testing is going to be, we're going to have our share of, of testing this year.
Such that we need to hire outside consultants to carry the load of doing that testing for the purposes of the PPTs?
Most of our outside testings were done for PPT, PPT recommendations, or they were independent educational evaluations, if a parent disagreed with us, and we chose not to go to due process on that. And there was some instances where we did hire some staff to do evaluations to assist our, our staff. In those particular cases, we seek our staff to do additional evaluations versus contracting for a private psychologist to come in.
Meaning it's sort of a version of overtime, that someone's
Correct.
Working later into an afternoon, and that way we're not?
Yes, and it's, it's at a much lower rate.
Right, so do you think that we're going to be able to do it with our current in-house staff, or do you look at, we are going to be bringing in outside help again?
For overages, if, if we need to cover, like, PPT recommended evaluations that our staff do, we'll seek support from our staff to do it after hours.
No, and you've said, so that's great, it's my understanding that a couple of years ago, it was literally not possible for our staff to do the task, so therefore, what you're saying is the numbers have come down, not that there aren't plenty, I'm not saying that, that they're not really, really busy, but we'll be able to handle it with our staff, even with our staff overtime. Is that correct?
Right now?
Okay.
That's my hope.
Too soon to tell.
Right now, that's my hope.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
This may be for Ms. Laborias, but are you anticipating any variance or difference in terms of the new statutory changes to excess cost reimbursement? I mean, obviously, we were kind of lucked out last year with a higher-than-typical reimbursement, and just how that may play out here, again, maybe too early to tell, but we now have this new cap type of thing happening, so. Yeah, so the plus of that is that it, it's predictable, the minus is that we lost, you know, a significant amount of revenue, but Mr. Mancusi is accounting for that on this spreadsheet, so when you see the encumbered amount, on the bottom line, excess cost projected revenue now at 70%, so you can see the reduction from the budget to what we anticipate in excess cost revenue. The budgeted number, when we said it'll match your budget book, it's really close, but if you remember, at year end, we made some adjustments to the budget after the board book came out, which included some adjustments to excess cost revenue. There were two adjustments, one was, you know, the board wanted us to increase it back to 73%. At that time, we didn't know what the state was planning, and we were just experiencing 82%, so that made sense. And then we had another adjustment downwards for the 72% we thought the state was going to be at. This is reflecting a projection at 70%, which is what we now know that they're going to be reimbursing us, unless something changes.
Thank you, Ms. Laborias. Any other questions?
Thank you both, and we, we will use this format, and you'll see this again next month, as, as you would expect, with each passing month, that right-hand column, that projected column becomes more and more accurate in terms of where we're going to land. But I thought, we thought, it was important as early as possible to start telling you, based on what we know now, and the kids that are with us now, and the costs that we have now, this is where we think you will land. And then with each month, we will be refining that.
And I appreciate you taking the time, Ms. Laborias and Dr. Tracy, for, for doing this report, so we're looking at it on a monthly basis, because that first, it's always a surprise with the quarter, quarterly in hearing, you know, unfortunately, typically that we're, we're short, so thank you.
Okay. If I may continue, a, a quick update on remote learning support. As of this morning, we had 57 students that were in restriction, I think, I guess we're not supposed to say quarantine anymore, but home with positive COVID results, 57 youngsters. You have an administrat, you have a board policy 6999 that requires a variety of steps be taken to support students who are in isolation due to COVID, per the, the Health Department requirements. At this point, I need to report to you that we are not doing all of those things, and I'm in the process of, before I direct everybody to resume doing everything that they were doing last year, I'm in the process of determining what is the extent of the need, the need specifically for the support instructor that you employed with grant funds that you had last year, for example. Once I get a picture of the, of the actual need, if, if it's at a level similar to what you experienced last year, we will expect those requirements, those policy and reg requirements to resume. But I thought before directing that, I should find out if the numbers have come down, and the need has come down to a point where we may not need to do all of those things. And if that's the case, I'll be going back to the Policy Committee to suggest a, a drawing back of, of those services. So I'll keep you posted about that. And the last thing I wanted to mention was that the State Department of Education has acknowledged receipt of the Racial Balance Plan Amendment that you adopted recently. They have set October 12th as the day when we will return to the State Board of Education to discuss this matter. I'll share with you a, an email that I got from Ms. Anastasia, the attorney that's handling this, where she basically requested a presentation on the 12th as to why the redistricting plans that we now have put forth are going to be effective when, from their point of view, the plans that were put forth earlier were not effective. And we had some conversation on the side, Mr. Asa and I, earlier, that, you know, the intervention of the pandemic, and there's a lot of reasons why. But I want to put the emphasis on the plan that you've adopted, and the dates that we've set forth, and the steps that we think will get us within less than 24 months to be compliant with the law. So 9:30 a.m., October 12th, we'll have to decide what, who will be in the delegation, but we'll make our way up to Hartford to present ourselves and, and answer their questions. That's it for me.
Any questions for Dr. Tracy? Okay, seeing none, committee liaison reports. Ms. Rotelli?
Just a reminder to everyone, Septus First Meeting will be September 28th at McKinley, at 7:30. Come out, Rob Mancusi will be speaking, introducing the coordinators, it's a great way for parents to connect, it's a great time for It's a great time for parents to meet their coordinators. So I look forward to meeting everybody, encourage you to come and join SEPTA as well as your homeschool PTA.
Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, I just... Yeah, I attended the first PTA council meeting of the 2223 school year this morning. Many thanks for providing a virtual option, so I was able to dial in from my other job for this. But yeah, it was really great just to have the first meeting, and they're going to be alternating from meeting here and meeting in individual schools. The next meeting is at Sherman on October 12, so that'll be a busy day for the district in many ways.
Yeah, just from facilities, we do have a meeting next week. The agenda is being formulated, but as part of the previous discussion earlier tonight, look for an email from me, not for any discussion outside of the public, but just to get feedback on, I'll throw a couple of things out there as to whether this board wants to do full board meetings or some of the things at committee level for feedback. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, we dealt with many of the things in this meeting that we talked about in Finance Committee, but also we discussed briefly what a financial impact from a school closure might be on our operating budget, just to try to let Mr. Papa George let that simmer in his head as we get into these discussions because that's going to be a factor going forward, and Mrs. Canelli mentioned that at a previous meeting. We also talked to, Ms. Laborius talked about the fundraising report that we got at the end of last year. She said that she is going to be working with Building Principles and trying to formulate policies to make sure that the monies in those fundraising accounts are accounted for and the ones that are obsolete, trying to come up with a procedure to roll those into other, for other uses. And just to, otherwise say, the other night, we had a Board of Finance had a meeting going over recent capital maintenance projects, and Mr. Papa George admirably represented us before that board.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Moving on to open board comment. Mr. Asa?
I just want to echo what Dr. Tracy said regarding open house. I mean, all my own experience was awesome to be back in the building with hundreds of people, all walking together, talking, and it felt like back in the day. So I hope everybody has been experiencing great open houses in the district this week and last week and moving forward, and I hope, and thank all the staff for really coming together and putting these on again like we used to.
And I'd just like to, again, thank staff for just a really, what's been a great back-to-school. It's been really, you know, just great just hearing from families and from kids and seeing the pictures online. I also want to report, I want to thank Dr. Tracy for inviting Mr. Testani and myself to the district leadership team. Mr. Testani joined the team last week for an introduction and a brief social coffee. So he is getting up to speed. Mr. Asa and I are planning on meeting with him next week just to, you know, begin the transition. So thank you for your help in moving us forward. Anybody else? Open board comment? Okay, seeing none, we will take it to the public. Just ask you to please state your name and address for the record, and there's a three limit time, three-minute time limit.
David Krasnov, 155 Burr Street. I just wanted to bring up and go back to the elephant in the room. You keep mentioning utilization numbers. If you look close at the utilization numbers, they don't seem to make too much sense. I am a local realtor, and I don't think they're taking into account the surge with COVID. Most people that moved out were older, most people that moved in were younger, and I think you're going to see a massive surge in the students. And if you go and use those numbers to close a school, you're going to end up having some egg on your face. I just think it needs to be out there that you need to look at these numbers. Take Dwight, for example. They're saying there's going to be four less students in Dwight in two years. I don't see how that's physically possible. Just in the three houses around me, right now, there's two students, there will be seven. I don't think I'm an anomaly. So I just, I want everyone to be aware that I think the student population is going to grow more than you think. So keep that in mind. So you close a school, class sizes will probably go up, schools are going to be maxed out, and then you're going to look at another solution. Are you going to build another school? It's going to cost more than $55 million that it's going to cost for Dwight or the $37 million it's going to cost to fix Jennings. So I just hope you guys all think that. I do ask that possibly you be a little more transparent about the SLAM collaborative, what they've done to come up with some of these numbers so that we, as the public, can see where you're getting the numbers, where the analytics are coming from, where they're finding out the students. It's not that they're doing a census or anything. I'm assuming it's a bunch of analytics that their computers are running. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. As your redistricting work begins to become more specific, I would make a request that all BOE committee meetings become more accessible for listening, attendance, and public comment, or that work moves to special meetings of the entire body. This could be on fair TV or simply recorded during the currently scheduled meetings, as we know you are all busy elected volunteers. But considering the scope and limited time span of this plan and its very important work, parents in our communities should have as much access to the board and its consultants as well as the experts and backup documents of companies like SLAM. I would also encourage a change that was mentioned at a prior BOE meeting, I excuse my lack of memory of who it was, the tab on the website, on the Board of Education website is still labeled as racial imbalance. Given the tenor of continued conversations for transparency, adding at the very least a tab for redistricting and then combining the two topics under that header would be a more accurate representation of the work that the Board of Education is doing. To add to something that was spoke to at this meeting, the current agenda for the Town Capital Planning Meeting on September 28, which apparently may be canceled, currently lists that meeting as a virtual town hall. I would request that this board engage on that format. As many of you know, because you are sitting here, you have been meeting in person longer than any other elected body in town. I'm not sure the continued reasons for that format, I'm sure there is one, but considering the implications of the components of this town planning, a public forum with opportunity for public comment should be adopted and is much more appropriate. Lastly, after reading the Dwight HVAC letter, that should have gone to the whole district. To acknowledge only one community's challenges that we know on a daily basis are seen by many staff and students, including my three children, I think informing the public of that nuanced issue in a totality is a much better way to approach it, especially with the redistricting coming because of those utilization and facilities issues. Thank you.
Ms., Dr. Tracy?
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. And just so that you know, I've sent that letter out to all the principals asking that they forward it to all the parents, even though it was a Dwight-related response, but all the parents should be getting that letter shortly.
Thank you. We don't typically respond to public comment, but just in terms of the, you can sit down, we will... Ms. Maxicelli made a suggestion, I believe, just in terms of having a separate tab for redistricting on the website, because as we mentioned, this work is really separate, you know, connected but separate from the Racial Imbalance Plan, so we will start populating it with the waterfall and past documents that SLAM have provided to us. I'm trying to remember the date of the SLAM presentation. We could put that, maybe a link of that meeting. It was done, I just wanted for the public record that it was done in a public, in a format. It was not done behind closed doors. There are minutes, and the video is available for those who are interested in watching it. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Asa, all in favor, motion carries 9-0. Thank you, everybody.